At seven oh three P M. Well, so everyone, we have a full house. We appreciate you all being here. I am Lauren Christensen, President of the Board. I'm going to start to my left and ask my colleagues to introduce themselves. Welcome, everyone.
Welcome, all of you. My name is Ahmed Ahmed, and I'm a trustee on the board.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard, and it's nice to see everyone tonight.
Good evening, I'm Anubhav Kirtsu. Thanks for being here. It's great to see so many friendly faces and new faces.
I'm Patrick Hio. Thanks for joining us in this nice sunny evening.
I'm Judy Westrop, Board Secretary. Thank you for coming out tonight. We know you could be doing something else on this beautiful evening, and we appreciate it.
First to the co-chairs.
Hi, everyone. I'm Saifi Pohar, and I'm a senior at Canton High School.
Good evening, Josh Patterson, and I'm a junior at Plymouth High School.
Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Good evening. Welcome, Superintendent Dr. Monica Merritt. I think I heard this morning there's nine days until spring. That really left a smile on my face, right? And that the daylight going longer is something that really makes me smile as well. I'd like to begin by introducing Miss Diane Robertson, my executive assistant, who is an amazing member of our team and keeps us all focused in the right direction. We thank her for being here. Mr. John Krieger, I say now the newest voice of PCCS. I just enjoy those social media pushes and those pushes and those... Is that what... That's the wrong word. Is that what it's called?
Reels.
Reels. You have to educate me a little bit more on the language to use, but that voice gets to me every single time. Appreciate you for being here, taking care of our technology needs. Remaining members of the team.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Joe Minnick. I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Abdulmet Yun. I'm the Chief Human Resources Office.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Engagement.
Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the adoption of the agenda and the approval of the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion?
Chairman President, I move that we adopt of the consent agenda and approve... I'm sorry, adopt and approve the consent agenda, action number twenty-five oh three fifty-one.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Trejo Quiho and seconded by Member Ahmed. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions, our last time together. We have new hires as well as retirements for your consideration. We have the approval of the minutes from the following meetings, our regular meeting on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, our special meeting minutes from March the first, twenty-twenty-five. We have first readings of the following policy, seven four four zero point zero three. That's the small unmanned aircraft systems. We also have out-of-country field trips that have been vetted through the SPA for your consideration. Finally, this evening, we have the consideration for the approval of a resolution to appoint representatives to the PCCS and Wayne County Parent Advisory Committee for Special Education. I'm very, very excited to get this parent group going yet again here in PCCS. I'm really excited about that.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Madu, can you please take us through even the sources?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We have one new hire that we would like to... He's tall. He sat down. So our new hire is Scott Offerman. He's hired as instructional coach for the district. We'd like to welcome Scott to our district. Thank you, Mary.
I'd first like to say we need taller microphones, if you don't mind. I'll keep it short, unlike myself, but I do want to say just I'm a lifer in education, although I think I'm currently serving a forty-year sentence in education. So out on good behavior for good financial decisions. But I've been in education my life. I grew up in a preschool, taught in middle school, taught in high school, and glad to become a full circle. So thank you for the opportunity, and I think my son has prepared some remarks. Did you want to come on up? He might need a little encouragement, a little round of applause. He likes to...
Thanks for hiring my dad.
That's it. Thank you very much. And that's all we have today.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, on to celebrating success with Member Picard.
I guess I have to move it down. On behalf of the Board of Education, it is an honor to recognize the incredible student congresses from Plymouth, Canton, and Salem High Schools with the Stars Award and the Extra Mile Awards for their outstanding advisors. The Student Congress at PCEP gives students the opportunity to thoughtfully engage with and address issues affecting the student body. Administrators, teachers, and students work together to plan student-led activities, allowing students to share their perspectives. Each school's governing body is responsible for organizing events and making decisions that impact the entire student population. Some key activities include homecoming events, food drives, Toys for Tots, and various community and school projects. Last month, all three congresses attended the MAS C State Conference in Grand Rapids, where each congress received the prestigious Stars School Award. Canton and Plymouth earned the highest honor that a member organization can achieve, the Award of Excellence. Both were also recognized for their exceptional service projects. Students Ellie D'Angelo and Sam Freeman were named Unsung Heroes, while Brooke McMahon and Isabel Prantara were nominated for Student of the Year. Additionally, Canton received the inaugural Quilt Award for their work on diversity, equity, On behalf of the Board of Education, I am pleased to present the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mile Award to those advisors who have demonstrated exceptional leadership and commitment. Their guidance has been crucial to the success of their student congresses consistently going above and beyond for their students. The recipients are the Canton High School co-advisors are Aaron Lee and Richard Muay... I know that name. Salem High School advisor Zach Summitt and Plymouth High School advisor Stephanie Medsker. Would you please come forward to accept your awards? Would any of you like to end the board?
So I guess we'll... I guess we'll test these out. Was there something that they get or... Okay, well, we'll go on. So where am I at here? Okay. Okay, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I'm proud to also present the students with the Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success Awards to the Executive Boards. I'll call out the names of each board advisor's school. So for Canton High School Executive Board, there's Somer Kurshi, Maya... And I apologize if I say the name wrong. Maya Sala, Christina Lachas, and Maria Lachas, and Sally Power. Power. Okay, where'd you guys... It's a lot of kids. All right. Okay, here's... All right, and then... Does anybody want to say anything? Anybody? Okay. All right. Then for Salem High School, the Executive Board is Reagan Klinglass, Emery Gay, Haley Wong, Sharbine Sajabur, Vedanth Kondor. And for Plymouth High School Executive Board, we have Brooke McMahon, Jack Kristea, Mackenzie Wagner, and Natalie Southwick. So now, would any of you like to say a word? Okay, here, I'm going to move on. I'm going to adjust this, too. Okay, good evening, Board and District Administration. I'm Summer Koreshi, and I'm the President of Canton Congress. On behalf of all three congresses at PCEP, we want to thank you for this tremendous honor, representing our hard work and dedication this past year, and at our recent state conference where we each took home meaningful accolades dedicated to leadership and progress. Congress, put simply, is a student government organization uplifted by student engagement and staff support. Our constitution describes our organization as a unit that provides the proper representation of the entire school body, creates a better school community, improves communication, and promotes enthusiasm and pride in our school. However, these mere broad strokes do not fully depict the many things our congresses do throughout the year. From our four standing committees, Student Bonding, School Spirit, Community Outreach, and Public Relations, to our weekly meetings and Tri-Congress events, we aim to promote student involvement and inclusion, all while creating responsible and proactive leaders. For Canton Congress specifically, we have made it our mission this year to promote inclusive and welcoming environments and drive meaningful change through persistent action. Our achievements in those fields can be represented by our awards at states this year. To briefly discuss our success at states and commend our attendees for their hard work, we would each like to share our congress's highlights for that weekend. The first award Canton Congress received was the Award of Excellence, which is the highest honor that a member organization can earn at MAS C, M A H S, which exemplifies the highest standard of organization, member development, community-minded service, and goal-oriented visions for their program. This was assembled by our state's attendees and overseen by myself and other board members. This is our third year in a row Canton Congress has received this honor. The second award that Canton Congress has won was the Exceptional Service Project, which recognizes a service project that spanned throughout the entire year. It was assembled by a select group of attendees and overseen by our board member Maria Lachas, our PR officer. They created a timeline of Canton's mascot change from... From... Excuse me. They created a time... Excuse me. Wow, one second. They created a timeline of Canton's mascot change from Chief to Cobra, and the role Congress played in facilitating that smooth transition, including the distribution of Cobra merchandise, purchasing a Cobra mascot suit, and creating mascot-related games on our social media. The last award we were recognized for was the Quilt Award, that solidified a program or project to take purposeful and tangible action and efforts to champion diversity, equity, and inclusion. This was assembled again by a select group of attendees, including myself, our Vice President Maya Sala, and one other. The Canton Club Support aims to increase funding, donations, and accessibility for D E I clubs to promote a safe and comfortable environment for students to get involved at the school. I'm going to pass the microphone over now to the President of Plymouth Congress.
Hello, my name is Brooke McMahon, and I'm the President of Plymouth Congress. As Summer said, we would like to sincerely thank you for this honor. Although these awards are reflective of each congress's individual accomplishments, our collaborative efforts play a major role in our success. Together, we work to create a sense of school spirit and involvement across the entire campus. We do this through events such as the KLA Leadership Forum, Tri-Congress bonding, staff appreciation, Spirit Weeks, Dinner in a Show, Powder Buff, and so many more. In addition to these, Plymouth Congress in particular has made it our mission to build relationships, not just in the school, but within Congress itself. With the large size of Congress, it can be difficult for all members to feel involved. That is why we strive to give each and every member the chance to grow as a leader. Last year, we established an internship program for anyone considering running for Executive Board in the future or simply hoping to be a more active member. These students learn from the current board while taking on additional responsibilities themselves. Additionally, we've implemented monthly bonding events chosen by members. These efforts have all created, worked together to create a positive environment that makes our weekly meetings something to look forward to. Over the last four years, I've been able to watch Plymouth Congress become more than just a club. It is truly a family. At the annual state conference, we were able to see all of our hard work pay off. I, along with fellow board members Natalie, Jack, and Kenzie, worked with a group of members who poured hours of their own time into preparation. From these efforts, Plymouth received the highest honor available to MAS C, M A H S member organizations, as Summer mentioned, the Award of Excellence, for the first time since 2019. In addition, we received the Exceptional Service Project Award for the second year in a row due to the success of our most impactful community service project, Ria's Readers. Started four years ago in memory of a Congress member who passed, Ria's Readers is a month-long event where members read a book and share an activity with elementary school classrooms. At the same time, we run a district-wide book drive with all donations going to a nearby elementary school library in need. This project creates lasting bonds between Congress and the community while allowing every single one of our members to make a difference. In addition to these awards, we also recognize the importance of acknowledging the members who go above and beyond. This is why we take the time to nominate individuals for the Unsung Hero and the Student of the Year Awards. On behalf of all of Plymouth Congress, thank you again for your recognition of all that we have accomplished. We will continue to strive for excellence and service-proud representatives of PCCS. I'm now going to pass the mic to the Salem President.
Hello, I am Reagan Klinglass, and I am the President of Salem Congress. As Brooke and Summer have said, we are truly honored to receive this award, recognizing all of our work and efforts. Salem Congress focuses on community service, school culture, student congress bonding, and staff appreciation. We hold many events like World Cleanup, volunteering at PB&J Detroit, staff breakfast, and bonding opportunities. For the past three years, we have held two focus events that make Salem Congress special. First off, we hold our annual Holiday Helpers Event, which takes place in December. This is our chance to help those in need in our community by buying them gifts and necessities for the holidays. With that, I would like to give a huge thank you to the Student and Family Engagement Department, specifically Ms. Vartanian Gibbs and her department, for all of their help with making this event successful. This year, we were able to provide for ten families within our community. We also hold our annual Senior Citizen Prom every spring. We normally hold this event at Independence Village, but this year have decided to switch it to Walton Woods Senior Living. This event is a great opportunity to connect to those in our community who we don't normally connect. We take them back to their youth with music, games, dressing up, and dancing. It's always a great night full of joy for both our members and the residents. None of these events would be possible without the help from the rest of the amazing Congress Board and members. Our members work with their committees to plan and execute every successful event. With all this being said, we decided this year to nominate two members for Unsung Hero and Student of the Year at the state conference. We wanted their efforts to go above and beyond for our student congresses to be recognized. Through many Tri-Congress Board meetings, we have used the strengths of all three congresses to expand our involvement within the community. We have done this by activities like our football tailgate before the Salem versus Plymouth game, where we had food, yard games, and club promotions. We also attend the Unified Sports and Special Olympics. As a part of MAS C, we attend many conferences like LTI, Women's Summit, Regionals, States, and the Pistons Conference coming up this Thursday. Attending these conferences allowed all three of us to win the Stars School Award at the state conference. Along with this award, all three congresses were recognized for our contributions to this year's state charity of Camp Kesem. This is a program that provides free summer camps, day programs, and virtual meetups for youth and adolescents facing a parent's cancer to connect with peers, process their experience, and have fun. With all this being said, we would like to invite you and the entire community to our Activity Extravaganza next Wednesday, March nineteenth, at six thirty P M, in the Salem Cafeteria. This will give you the opportunity to not only see what our congresses do, but also how we build opportunities for all Park students. Again, we would like to thank you guys all so much.
That concludes our... Well, anybody wants to say anything? Okay. All right. So thank you for joining us, and we hope you enjoy the rest of the evening. We are moving on to Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. I have a lengthy report to give today, quite a bit to share with everybody. It was mentioned last meeting that we were, as a board and even the administration, were invited to an event on February twenty-seventh at the Salem High School Rock Cafe by the PCEA. It was a speed networking event, and really, it was great. We were all able to attend. It was a great event for teachers, administrators, and us as a board to break the ice and get to know one another better, and I just wanted to share a special thank you to the PCEA for organizing such a successful event. We're looking forward to the next one in the future. As was mentioned, March is Reading Month. I wanted to give a special shout-out to Mrs. Hersch's fifth-grade class at Izbister Elementary School. I personally had the opportunity to read to her class last week, and it was the best. What an engaging group of fifth-grade kiddos. It was such a fun time, and this is such a great year to really celebrate the importance and the joy of reading. I know we all have some opportunities on the forefront to read, and I would implore any of the community members, parents, or board members to take up the opportunity to be a guest reader or mystery reader during March's Reading Month, because it is so fun. Okay, kind of ticking through my list here. So tomorrow evening, there's another event on the horizon. The 2025 Lightning Robotics Team is hosting their showcase from six thirty to eight thirty P M at Canton High School. The board members have received an invitation to attend, but parents and community members and other students are also invited. This is really an opportunity for all of us to learn more about our robotics team as they embark on their competition season. And then lastly, I want to provide an update on our Board Governance Workshop that we held on March first in this room. First of all, I want to thank all my fellow board colleagues for giving up a Saturday afternoon, and Dr. Merritt as well, and Ms. Robertson, to the important work of, you know, our team building and board governance. We were led through a facilitated discussion. We began by updating our operating principles, which is actually on the agenda this evening for follow-up discussion. We discussed our board communication protocols, and we also had a discussion around citizens' comments. So you may notice, if you're looking at the agenda at home or in your laps this evening, our agenda has been updated due to the work that we did that Saturday. We all have collectively decided to place citizens' comments after the Superintendent's Report and before the Administrative Reports and Recommendations section. This section is... This section is limited to thirty minutes, and comments will be made in order of submission. So I have that order here, and we'll just go in order as they were submitted. If we have more comments that move beyond our thirty-minute time limit for that section, we have a citizens' comments overflow section that follows the Board Administrative Reports and Recommendations section. Another area we would like to update is the deadline for submitting citizens' comments. From the start of the meeting at seven P M, to allow for citizens' comments forums to be submitted up to the first citizens' comment section. However, in order to do so, we need to update our Board Policy oh one six seven point three, Public Participation at Board Meetings. So this will be reviewed at our Policy Committee meeting? And it was? Okay, good. Member Sidhu will share that update, I'm sure, in her report, and it will eventually be brought to the full board for a vote. So until then, the submission deadline will remain at the start of our business meetings, but we look forward to that change, too. And this concludes my House Report. Okay, moving on to Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Secretary Westrop.
Good evening, President Christensen. In our last meeting was March fifth at five P M. In that meeting, we welcomed our new citizen representatives from the community. We welcomed three new representatives, and I'm very excited to have them join our committee. We also reviewed an elementary program highlights presentation, which will come to the Board tonight, and also discussed two materials for two different courses, one piano studies course and also a middle school math course. Lastly, we talked about an out-of-country field trip that was approved in tonight's consent agenda, and our next meeting will be April second at five P M in this room. We welcome all of the community to come and join us. We are the most fun committee, despite what finance and operations will tell you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, on to the Policy Committee with Vice President Sidhu.
Thank you. I think we have a little challenge, because we... First, I want to thank the four students that came to the Policy Committee. I want to thank them for their valuable feedback, their interest, their engagement, to have that perspective from the student lens, because a lot of these policies do impact them. And they were able to provide us with not only language clarification, but also other things that we were overlooking that, you know, from our minds, these are standard things, but they asked us to revisit some of the wording. So I want to thank them. With that, we also have interviews coming up tomorrow for our new community representatives that hopefully will serve on the Policy Committee for the next three years... Two years, I'm sorry, next two years. So we're going to be doing those interviews tomorrow, and I'm hoping after tomorrow night, we will have new people to serve on the Policy Committee. I will announce those names once they're finalized tomorrow. Moving forward with the work of the Policy Committee that we worked on today, we went through, basically talked about purchasing, understanding that the purchasing sixty-three twenty policy is going to work its way into finance and operations. They're going to sort of look at all of the information and the pieces and look at which services and the dollar amount. Once they flesh that out, they're going to send it back to Policy for review. Once we flushed it out, we're going to send it to the whole board. So sometimes these policies do take a while, so be patient on that one. The next policy that we worked on... I'm getting old. Sorry, we can't read with glasses now. So we also went through old business, reviewing criminal justice information security. This is basically a protocol that the district has to follow based on new state laws, basically protecting anyone that has access to information about fingerprints and people's background. So went through the legal wording of that. We went through three different policies for conflict of interest, really targeting different groups, including admin and professional staff. The wording of these policies are the same, but the groups are different based on policy numbers, and those policy numbers are eleven thirty for admin, thirty-one ten for professional staff, and forty-one ten for...
Support staff.
Support staff, thank you. Moving on to the new business, we did spend a lengthy amount of time on public participation at board meetings, and again, I want to thank the students for their feedback on this. And we pretty much went through the old policy and updated... We had a big packet, so let me get to... And I believe a lot of you have this policy or have referenced it at some point. So basically, the biggest piece of this policy was to determine at what point would people submit the citizens' comments cards. And in 2022, we made a change based on the circumstances at that point, to have those cards be submitted at the beginning of the meeting, and we feel collectively after that workshop that we can make some flexibility or we can add flexibility into this. So we have identified, as Lauren said, two pieces of citizens' comments in our agenda. The first one is limited to thirty minutes. The second one is the overflow. So we're going to update this policy with the language that says participants or people who want to submit citizens' comments and want to speak can submit their card up until the point of the first portion of the citizens' comments. So whenever that takes place, I believe it's after Dr. Merritt's Superintendent Report, so whenever that takes place, after that point, no more citizens' comments cards will be allowed. So people have between beginning... So people have between beginning of the meeting till now, as you're sitting and you're talking and you're listening, and you say, "Hey, I still want to submit my card," you have up until that first portion of the citizens' comments. We will work on clarifying that wording and make sure that the second part of the citizens' comments is clear as well. And that's pretty much the only change that we put in. Everything else was standard. So that will be coming to the whole board as a first read, I believe, probably in two weeks.
Next month, April's meeting.
You have to wait a long time for that. Spring break. The other policies that we looked at today, Policy 6110, Grant Funds, 6111, Internal Controls, 6112, Cash Management of Grants. Those were updated based on federal laws and guidelines that were given to us by legal counsel and Mr. Medjune. So we added the wording that was required by federal law. We debated, can we change anything? And technically, we can. This is what the federal law says we have to have. So that wording was added. For our board members, when you get this, it'll have the new in green, the old one in purple, so you can review it. But again, this is standard language that was given to us. So that's all we got done today, but I encourage everyone to join us at our next meeting, April 22nd, in the boardroom back there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to Finance and Operations Committee with Treasurer Kehoe.
Finance and Operations Committee also interviewed new citizens' representatives that were clamoring to get onto the most exciting committee that we have. We did select one returning citizens' representative and two new citizens' representatives to be part of that committee, and we're very excited to have them. We made sure that the other folks that were not selected knew that these are public meetings, and we welcome a participation, at least in Finance and Operations, for a little bit more casual. When we have citizens' comments or feedback, we can provide more responses as part of that process. So we encourage people to come to that meeting to see what we're doing from a Finance and Operations Committee perspective. We also reviewed and had a good discussion about the high school AV technology refresh. So this is a debate or conversation around projectors versus flat panel displays and the work that's going on and the input that's happening from our teachers and educators and technologists and the students as to what's the appropriate technology as we refresh those devices. And then we also did a preview and a review of the mid-year budget amendment that's coming up here tonight on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting is Thursday, April 3rd. It's here in this room, and we encourage the community to come. See what the excitement's about.
Thank you. On to Student Voice in Action Committee with Josh Insay.
So we've actually not had an SVA meeting since our last board meeting, and election results for the co-chair positions are still pending, and our next meeting is...
Yeah, our next meeting is on the 17th of March, starting at 4:30 in the Pioneer Media Center.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our reports. We'll go to Dr. Merritt, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Christensen. I promised to be brief tonight, but I never miss an opportunity to brag on our amazing students and our staff. Tonight, I want to offer some sincere congratulations to the 22, hear that now, 22 PCEP students who are recently named finalists in the annual National Merit Scholarship Competition. Please join me. The students to qualify as finalists, they have to be placed in the top 1% of all scores nationwide on the PSAT exam. And then they're evaluated as well on their coursework and their grades. As finalists, the students are now in the running for a variety of educational grants, ranging from cash scholarships sponsored by businesses and educational groups to full-room and board scholarships sponsored by universities. The winners of the competition will be announced later this year. And again, this is an unusually large number of finalists here in PCCS. I believe this is probably, since my time here, the largest group that I remember. I remember, I think it was in 2023, we had semifinalists that were 37, but these are actually 22 finalists, and we're so proud of our young people. With our teachers, I'd like to recognize them this evening as well. As part of the district's mission to provide a well-rounded, globally-informed education to our students, I'm proud to share that a $200,000 State of Michigan grant was given to our teachers, and it gave them the chance to experience a place-based professional learning program. The program will see teachers visit Detroit museums, institutions, and houses of worship that reflect the histories and experiences of multicultural communities in the region. Last month, they visited the Zepplin Holocaust Center in Farmington Hills. They're scheduled to visit Temple Israel this month. PCCS teachers also visited the Arab American National Museum and the Islamic Center of America in Dearborn in October of 2024. Future visits include trips to the Plymouth Historical Museum, the Charles Wright Museum of African-American History, Henry Ford Museum, and the Detroit Institute of Art, the Basilica of St. Anne in Detroit, the Gurdvar Singh Sabah of Michigan in Canton, and the Hindu Temple of Canton, and the Midwest Buddhist Aviation Center in Warren. And we're very proud of the work they've done to receive this grant and the professional learning that is available for them. Finally, I'd like to end this evening by inviting the community to join me next week for our winter edition of Coffee with Monica. This will take place on March 18th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Canton Public Library. And this is an opportunity to meet with the community. My team will be there as well. It encourages two-way dialogue, so you can ask questions and learn more about our district's programs and operations. And we have, just again, the access to the administrative team. So we welcome the community to come out to the Canton Public Library. That's going to be Tuesday, March 18th at 5:00 p.m. And that ends my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, up next is citizens' comments. As a reminder, this is a timed section for 30 minutes. Each citizen has three minutes to speak, and I'm going to call the first speaker in order of submission. So first up, we have Crystal Clark.
Hi, this is my first meeting, so I'm a little nervous. But I had a concerned, a couple concerns, actually. My daughter, who I'm sure everybody met this evening, she escaped from Bentley yesterday, and 911 had to be called. And this is not the first time that she's escaped. And to my knowledge, she was missing for about 12 minutes and found in the woods, laying down and soaking wet, and who knows what she was doing during that time. So Bentley has the cognitive impaired program at the school, and I'm just wondering what we can do to get the safety there more secure with maybe getting a fenced-in area for just the, you know, even if it's just for the special needs children to go out in that one section. I know there's a bond coming up that they're getting. I don't know if there's some money that we can scoot to the side for that, because the safety issue is real, and it's not just my daughter that I know this has happened to. It's other children as well. And aside from that top concern, I do feel like they are lacking, and they need more support with their paras. And their paras need better training to be able to meet the needs of our children in those special needs classrooms. So those are my two big concerns. And like I said, I've never been to one of these before, so I wasn't even sure if this was the right space that I would need to come to. But I did speak with Ms. Hayes earlier, and she told me that, you know, voicing my concern is never like a waste of time, so that's why I'm here. Thank you very much. All right, and that's it. I'm done?
This is your time to speak to us. The board does not typically respond to citizens' comments, but the administration will follow up with you.
Okay, so you just make a note of this and then, okay. And I'm also going to email my concerns as well, but thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Jan Len.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. And I'm going to talk about the repeal of the Board Policy 2410, the prohibition of referral and assistance. In response to Michigan amending the State Schools Aid Act, Section 166, and Plymouth Canton following suit, as a result, the school employees are able to refer or assist someone else's child without parental consent to have an abortion. Even putting abortion aside, let's talk about parental consent. I mean, we know we need parental consent when we're talking about medication. We need it from the doctor. We need it from the parent. Even for over-the-counter prescriptions, we need parental consent. And that's a great thing. I mean, it's in the best interest of the child, but also it gives the parents the impression that even during the school day, when they're not with their child, that the medical advice that they would give is being provided for their kids while they're at school. Parents trust the Plymouth community. So back to abortion. As with any other health concern, the decision to get an abortion should not be decided by the school. To be clear, I don't think the majority of employees at the school district are looking for ways to take our kids and have an abortion. I don't think that. But they can. Right now, they can. And I find that horrifying. So whether you believe a fetus is human, or maybe you're not sure, the school system has no business playing a part in this decision between a parent, student, and their doctor. So the school board needs to prohibit school employees from referring for or assisting students in obtaining abortions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is, I may be reading this wrong, but is it Lisa Carzen?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm blessed to speak with you tonight. I just want to say I have a real heart for education, having a career in education and forming teachers now in higher education and principals, but more so as a mama bear, you know, like all of us here. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you. And in fact, it's my only son, who is now 22. When he was an infant, and he had a lot of health issues. And in fact, within the first 12 months of his life, he had 14 upper respiratory infections that were life-threatening, that were constantly in ER with him. And you know what that does to a mom's heart, right? You know, just anything to keep the kiddo alive, medication after medication, and just knowing that I was the only person who could meet those needs, my husband and myself. It was so bad that the pulmonologist who couldn't help him would say, "Make sure if his oxygen levels drop beneath a certain level at night or his respirations drop beneath a certain level, that, you know, you get him to the ER or give him an extra nebulizer of steroids." So I'd literally sit there at night and count his respirations per minute, watching his chest rise, one, two, right? And it gets below a certain point, and this is what a mama bear does. And so when my son grew, and mama bears do all those things, like when your kiddo goes to touch a hot stove, you instinctively go and you pull him away. No, you just know that's bad for them. And you do anything to move heaven and earth to protect your kiddo from that danger, because only mamas and papas know that danger and know their kiddo like the back of their hand. And so when my kid grew and got to be a teen and made all the bad decisions that teenagers make, and I would go to him and say, "But, Michael, why didn't you go to your friends instead of me or to this other adult instead of me?" And he'd say, "Well, you know, I didn't want the consequence. I didn't want the car keys taken away. I didn't want..." You know, it's normal. They want to avoid the trouble. They knew they messed up and made a bad decision. You know what? He was scared, and he didn't want to necessarily come to mom and dad at first. And I would say to him, "But you forget, son. I was the one who counted your respirations and your breath when you were little. You forget I'm the one who knows you like the back of my hand. You forget I know your bodily needs better than I know my own." And so it's for this reason that I'm here today, begging you to please, mindful that mamas and papas know their kids better than anybody else, to reinstate the policy that would prohibit kids from getting abortion without parental consent, mindful that we know it's best for them. And so this is not an issue, and I'm begging you, please, when you go to examine this issue and policy, I know is forthcoming, to put, forget whether you're pro-life or pro-abortion, forget it. I would propose it's not about that. It's about, do we want to empower our girls to do what's best for them, to surround them with love? Do we want to love our girls well? Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Up next is Colin Miranda.
Good evening. I'm Colin Miranda, a Plymouth resident, addressing rescinded Policy 2410. Policy 2410 prohibited school staff from referring students for or assisting them in obtaining an abortion. In September, the rescinding of this policy was welcomed by President Christensen, Vice President Sidhu, Secretary Westra, and Treasurer Kehoe. It was rejected by Trustee Picard. At the last regular meeting, Trustee Picard motioned to restore and modify the policy, but it was seconded by no one. Trustee Voss wasn't present. A vote to repeal Policy 2410 and apathy toward reinstating a modified version promotes an anti-human, pro-choice belief system. Over the past decade, I've dialogued with many pro-choice Michigan residents around the state. The vast majority falsely claims that human embryos and fetuses are not human beings. David Boonan, professor of philosophy at the University of Colorado, has written the most comprehensive defense of the pro-choice position in his book, A Defense of Abortion. He says, "Perhaps the most straightforward relation between you or me and every human fetus from conception onward is this: All are living members of the same species, Homo sapiens. A human fetus is simply a human being at a very early stage in his or her development." World-famous anatomists Heath Moore, TVN Persod, and Mark Torscha confirmed this in their medical textbook, The Developing Human: Clinically Oriented Embryology. They write, "Human development begins at fertilization when a sperm fuses with an ovum. This marks the beginning of each of us as a unique individual." Back to Boonan, he further admits, "This was a difficult book to write. In my office are several pictures of my son. In one, he is only a few weeks old, clinging firmly to the arms that are holding him and still wearing the tiny hat that he wore home from the hospital. Another picture was taken 24 weeks before he was born. The sonogram image reveals a small head tilted back and an arm raised up with a hand pointing back toward the face and a thumb extended out toward the mouth. This picture shows the same little boy at a very early stage in his physical development, and there is no question that the position I defend in this book entails that it would have been morally permissible to end his life at this point." Thus, Boonan is saying, "The position I defend in this book is that it would have been okay to kill my son at this point in his life. This is the pro-choice position. Intentionally killing some innocent human beings is okay." Is this really what you want to tell your constituents? That killing some younger, smaller, more vulnerable, totally innocent human beings, potential students in our school district, is okay, and we voted to facilitate this? I request that you please adopt a modified version of Policy 2410. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Natalie Sharp.
Hello. At the last board meeting, you guys spoke about special ed paras and hiring, and I just wanted to provide my perspective and some insights. So for context, I sub as a para and teacher, and the majority of my jobs are special ed. And I had an IEP myself, and my mom's a para, and I have been on more interviews for para jobs with PCCS than one person probably should have, like maybe 30 or something. So I know a lot about the paras. So first of all, I just want to say that every district has an abundance of special ed jobs. It is not a PCCS thing. I don't think PCCS is doing anything wrong. I can tell you that most districts, there's a shortage of sub jobs. They always get taken instantly, and the jobs that get left are always special ed paras and special ed teachers. And whenever I see a job that's posted as vacancy, it's always vacancy special ed teacher or vacancy special ed para. I hardly ever see, almost never, like vacancy math teacher. It's all special ed jobs. And I know for a fact that PCCS and Northville has resorted to Delta T as staffing agency. So there's not a teacher shortage, but a special ed teacher shortage and a special ed para shortage. So I think your presentation clearly showed that, but I just wanted to reiterate, based on my personal observation from multiple districts. And one reason why the special ed shortage is effective and why, like, teachers are leaving, and I hate to say it, I really hate to, is I think it's the students. Like, I don't want to blame them, and I really want to be positive. But after being in the schools and after being in multiple classrooms, it's just clear to me that the behaviors are just worse than they used to be, because I was in special ed myself. I feel like I would remember if there was like this many tantrums and violent behaviors. And look, I don't know what the problem is. I'm not an expert. I have no idea. But all I can say is I know it's not the same education system I grew up in. So that means we just have to do things differently and figure out what we can do to fix it. Also, I'm tired of seeing high-functioning people give up on life and treating them like they can't do the most basic things. So just because someone's high-functioning, they can still do stuff, and we shouldn't try to accommodate every whim. So here are some solutions that might help all this. So first of all, the pay rate. For sub pay rate, all subs, every para job is $15 across the board for Plymouth Canton, For subpay rate, all subs, every para job is $15 across the board for Plymouth Canton, but no buy did something unique, is subpara jobs are $15 an hour, but if it's a self-contained special ed para, it's $16 an hour. So maybe special, that's for subs, but maybe Plymouth Canton could think about doing that, too. Second is underappreciation. Maybe do a para-professional appreciation week. I know there's a teacher appreciation week. And also, I noticed you guys share resignations, retirements, and new hires at the beginning of the board meeting? Only for teachers. Why not ed paras? And grounds, maintenance people, nutrition services? Why do teachers and para, teachers and admin only get recognized at the new hires and resignations? I'm just curious, maybe that would be a good idea, to recognize the paras, because I think they don't always get the recognition. And then finally, think about maybe doing a special ed facility in the future to combine Gols, Madonna, ASD rooms, and some of that all in one place. Maybe like a centralized location, so you can still bus kids for inclusion programs, but I think that could help cut down on some of the travel for some of the social workers, just something to think about. And then also, look into things like the screens, I think the technology is maybe an issue, so get educated and learn about possibly the effects. And finally, believe in your kids, believe in your adults, offer everyone clear feedback, make sure everyone's voice is heard, no matter what job they do, including the kids, and don't judge people. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Lisa Capitina.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lisa Capitina, and I actually came this evening to primarily thank the board for allowing people in the community to attend your board governance meeting a couple of weeks ago. I may have been the only one who took the opportunity, but I felt very welcomed, and it also gave me an opportunity to see the individual board members work together. And considering I moved here after some of you were on the board already elected, it gave me an opportunity to actually have a window into who you are, why you came here. So I found it very beneficial. There was a glitch, and I wasn't able to come for the second half. However, you should know that one of your colleagues, Diane Robertson, who I didn't know it was you over there, called me not once, not twice, but three times to explain and apologize, and I'm very grateful that you did, and it was certainly a very nice olive branch. The other reason I came, actually, now that you have said about the citizen comments, is because the last couple of times I was at the meeting, I was very sad when I left, after hearing so many students talk about how they felt they were bullied, unkind things they felt were said to them. And I thought, as a parent who was the president of the school committee, and I'm the PTO, and I brought Sheriff Bouchard's online bullying program into our school 20-some years ago, between all of those online programs and in-the-school programs for anti-bullying, and now we have the diversity and the inclusion programs, we still have an issue with our children. And so I was wondering, is it maybe sometimes because kids just can be mean? Like, it's a learning curve, it's maturity? I don't know what the answers are. You are the board, but by you allowing more citizen comments and welcoming adults and other community members to speak to you, even though we probably don't always agree with you, as the adults in the room, I think we are mentoring better behavior and showing more tolerance and acceptance and respect, even though we may disagree, or we may disagree and not always feel the same way. So thank you. Your action by moving forward and allowing more citizen comments and making them feel welcome is a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Up next, we have Samya Aurora. Am I saying that properly?
Hi, everyone, I'm Samya. It's okay, people do it all the time.
Thank you.
I graduated from Canton High School last year in June, and I go to U of M Dearborn. I'm studying secondary education with a concentration in English, and I hope to teach at PSEP one day, so I hope that happens. Something I just want to talk about was that there's not much diversity when it comes to teachers and staff. Like, all my life, I've been going, like, I've been in this district since I was a kindergartner, I attended Workman, then Pioneer, then Canton High School. And I've never had an Asian-American teacher, never had a teacher that looked like me, and that in a way was motivation for me to pursue secondary education and become an English teacher. So I think right now, I just want to stress the importance of having representation within the district more when it comes to teachers, and making sure that we're really, like, finding these teachers, because they are out there, we just can't apparently find them. But yeah, that's all I wanted to talk about, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have, hey, bear with me, Matthew Cara Magno.
You have pretty close.
Please correct me, what's your last?
Cara Magno.
Cara Magno, Mr. Cara Magno.
Yes, previous to this, I was a teacher for 15 years, and I usually just did Mr. C. That was the easiest thing for everybody, thank you. Sorry, I'm not used to this part, so I have my, my notes on my phone. My family moved here two years ago. We chose to come to Plymouth Canton not just because of its reputation for academic excellence, but also for its commitment to equity and inclusion. I children attend Tonda, which is a no-place-for-hate school, and we're very proud of that. Right now, across our country and our state, our LGBTQ students are under attack simply for being who they are. As educational leaders, you have a duty of care and safety to all of your students. Your LGBTQ students are not a source of danger, your LGBTQ students are in danger. It is your moral obligation to protect them while they're in your care and to set an example for our community in doing so. PCCS currently has inclusive policies regarding gender-diverse students that serve as a model to the rest of the state, and I urge you to maintain these policies despite outside pressure. I understand it's difficult to stand on principle when it feels like so many in power are already against you, but that is what you owe your students and nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Rachel Hayes.
Good evening. We are people too. This begins the February 13, 2025 memorandum sent to Michigan school districts from Dr. Michael Rice, the state superintendent. The subject of his memo was LGBTQ plus students: Protections and Supports. This plaintive statement, "We are people too," was said to Dr. Rice when he met with a group of LGBTQ plus students in order to, as he stated, "listen and learn." Dr. Rice noted the significance of any student feeling the need to remind him or anyone of this fact. Sadly, these people are now living in a country that makes a statement like this necessary for many to hear. As it stands now, transgender and non-binary people are being told that they should not exist, that who they are is a lie is condemnable, that their gender identity is an idea that needs to be eliminated. This translates to the transgender community that they, as a people, need to be eliminated. It is no wonder that so many children and their parents are frightened and suffering. The Human Rights Campaign has declared a state of emergency for the LGBTQ plus community. There has been a 33% increase in volume on the transgender suicide hotline since the inauguration. The transgender community is in crisis. But, as Dr. Rice notes, quote, "LGBTQ plus students do not just disappear because websites are scrubbed of LGBTQ plus content. Despite attempts to redefine language and delete pages from federal websites, LGBTQ plus students remain a valued part of Michigan schools and communities and deserve to be supported," end quote. I want to thank the board for all that you have done and all that you continue to do to ensure that our LGBTQ plus children are supported and valued in our schools. It is crucial that all the children of our community be allowed to participate in their education without fear of discrimination or exclusion. PCPS's current policy makes certain that this is true for these children, and I want to thank you for your commitment to this life-saving policy. The way to ensure that we, as a community, do our very best for all of our children is to, as Dr. Rice desired to do, listen and learn. Let us continue to be open-minded and always start at a place of empathy, kindness, and compassion. It is imperative to both the emotional and physical well-being of every LGBTQ plus child that they be seen, heard, defended, and protected, and that they be unconditionally embraced as people too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next is Heather Gatney.
Hi, I'm here tonight to support our LGBTQ plus students, and on behalf of one of those students, I would like to read her letter to the school board. This letter is from a PSEP senior, and it is unaltered and uncensored. Dear school board members, I am deeply concerned with many of the ideas expressed by recently-elected board member Jennifer Voss. As a queer student at PSEP, I find her beliefs about queer students to be deeply worrying for our school environment. Most queer students at The Park already face discrimination on a day-to-day basis as it is. I myself can't go a single day without hearing at least one homophobic comment or slur made by other students on the path, in the halls, or even in a classroom. Much of this comes from a place of ignorance, yet it doesn't stop the harm that it causes. I worry if protections for queer students lose the board's support, then the well-being of many children in this district will be in danger. I hope you will keep queer students in mind as you continue making decisions. As a senior who is graduating this year, I'm very scared for the queer students at our elementary, middle, and high schools who have to continue to learn in an environment that is becoming increasingly unsafe for them. Sincerely, Grace Olzak, 12th grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Nancy Farber.
Hello, I'm Nancy Farber. I'm a longtime Canton resident, but tonight I'm here as a member of Western Wayne Indivisible on behalf of our partner organization, PFLAG, and I also have a letter of support from a queer student at The Park. I'm going to read this letter unaltered and uncensored. To be a queer student at PSEP is to experience hate and discrimination from not only your peers, but from many of your teachers as well, and now from the school board's newly-elected Jennifer Voss. Ms. Voss does not care about LGBTQ students. She only cares about an agenda that pushes prejudice against trans, non-binary, and other queer students. As a queer student, I have been called a faggot and a dyke at school in this district. I have had food thrown at me from homophobic classmates. I was harassed at homecoming for simply dancing with my girlfriend. I have watched my trans peers be harassed and bullied. For what? For being themselves? No, for being different, for being bad or weird. I have reported my experiences to administrators, and the majority of the time I have been met with silence. But just because that hate and bias form doesn't work does not mean we should stop trying. It means you need to try harder. I do not want to see this district get turned into our government, where there seems to no longer be a separation between church and state, no regard for human beings and those who may be a little different, no respect for people who are not cis, heterosexual, and white. That is the education we are headed towards if we allow Jennifer Voss and Cheryl Picard to continue a rampage against our students' future. When asked by Plymouth Canton's PFLAG chapter, "Are you in favor of PCCS's policy supporting transgender and gender non-conforming students?", do you know what Ms. Voss said? She said, "No." When asked why, she responded with, "I understand that some students may feel uncomfortable sharing restrooms with peers of a different gender, and it's important to address those feelings while promoting respect and understanding." This answer was crafted out of ignorance and a lack of understanding for what it means to be transgender. Do not give up on our district's children. It starts with queer students, but then where does it stop? Thank you for your time. JF, Queer Youth Committee Board President. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have, I'm sorry, I've not been keeping time.
We have about three more people that are of this group for cohesive just sake, I wonder if they could speak also.
We've just implemented this change, and unfortunately, we need to adhere to that 30 minutes. I implore you to stay past our administrative reports and recommendations and speak at the overflow. I appreciate everybody's time this evening. Thank you for keeping time, I was not paying attention to that. Okay, so on to administrative reports and recommendations, we have teaching and learning with Israel.
Yep, and thank you. It's my pleasure to invite to the podium Dr. Lily, Dr. Denise Lilly, Executive Director of Elementary Education. We'll be sharing with you some elementary program highlights focused on instructional coaching model, so welcome to Dr. Lilly.
Good evening, everyone. I have to move my gup, so thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. This evening, I am going to present highlights from, there we go. This evening, I'm going to present highlights from my elementary school program with a very specific focus around instructional coaching, areas of the coaching model, and then our results and impact. As you are aware, here are our dynamic plan goals, which I will not read in depth, but they are very specifically aligned as I'm going to talk about our teaching and learning objectives. So when we look at our teaching and learning objectives, 1.1 student learning and growth, as well as 2.1 student support, engagement, and well-being, they are very specifically tied to the work we are doing pertaining to instructional coaching and the outcomes that support our students and our staff. Through job-embedded professional learning, which encompasses individualized coaching cycles and collaborative planning, coaches support teachers in adopting evidence-based instructional strategies that foster an environment of continuous improvement that addresses the diverse academic and developmental needs of our students. If we are intentional about our implementation of practices and we provide rich professional learning for our staff, then our learning environments will be culturally responsive and provide appropriate supports and extensions to improve the growth and achievement for all of our students, therefore creating a comprehensive elementary school program that is responsive, challenging, and empowering for all of our students in alignment with our learner profile. And looking at our MI-CAP district goal, very specifically around our MTSS multi-tiered systems of support framework, we want to ensure that we are including supports that are meeting the needs of students academically from a social-emotional perspective, as well as from a behavioral developmental perspective. And you will see in our next slides how the instructional coaching model is tied very specifically to that. For the 2425 school year, here are our areas of focus for elementary. I'm not going to read all of them, we've talked about this in a variety of different presentations, but today, again, as I said before, I want to highlight our instructional coaches and the great work that they are doing. So when we look at our model, what we know is coaching is one of the primary activities of our district improvement plan connected to MTSS. All of our teachers work with our instructional coaches to refine practices, which in turn, again, will promote student achievement, growth, and outcomes for our children. which in turn, again, will promote student achievement, growth, and outcomes for our children. Coaching, collaboration, and consulting. When we talk about coaching, cognitive coaching is not about fixing anyone. It is designed to help teachers become more reflective, intentional, and effective in their thinking. In our framework, you will see shifts between coaching, collaborating, and consulting. Coaching meaning deeper reflection and thinking. Collaboration will sometimes be working side by side. And then the consulting pieces, which will give the teachers the opportunity to receive expert advice and research. Now, when we do all of these things, and again, I'm talking a bit fastly because I'm going to actually have someone whose boots on the ground doing the work daily. When we do all of the work that we are coaching, collaborating, and consulting, the ultimate outcome is academic engagement for our students. And we know when our students are engaged academically, we're going to see the growth and outcomes that we are looking for for our students. So, again, supporting teachers means supporting students, in turn, creating academic achievement and engagement. I want to just talk about this slide briefly. You may remember this as this is what we highlighted last school year during our spring data review, and very specifically looked at the key steps that we began the implementation of our instructional coach model last school year. As a reminder, we trained over 300 teachers and supported them within 3,000 hours of professional learning around instructional coaching. Again, this school year in 2024-25, implementing coaching plans based on our current data. Areas of focus are word recognition, language comprehension, and then the implementation of our math resources. To date, when we look at the amount of coaching we've had in our district, in our, excuse me, our elementary schools, 905 of the 2,340 coaching hours that have taken place have been very specific around word recognition. And I'm not going to look at that. You can see the chart here. 27% was around pedagogy and management, 27% on math, 24% on ELA word recognition, and 20% on ELA language comprehension, again, including phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition, all encompassed in our UFLY program, which focuses on the foundational skills for our youngest learners. So, here are some key findings to date. And again, we're looking at the fall and winter data from the 24-25 school year. You will see an increase in the vast majority of our areas for our kindergarten and first-grade students. We've seen 12% increase, of 12% more students scored above average in foundational skills current progress, as well as 5% more, 59 students in first grade. I'm not going to read this slide in its entirety. You have it in front of you in the packet. But again, I just want to show you that when we talk about the progress that we are making, we are seeing the work. We talk oftentimes about the triangulation of data, not looking at just one data set. Well, here you see we have the NWEA data, as well as our DIBELS data. And in both those data sets, which we will unpack at later date also for you in our spring data review, you will see that the work that we are doing is making a difference for our students. And now, I have the honor and privilege of introducing Dave Turle, who is principal of Tonda Elementary School, as well as Kristin Bertoya, who is one of our phenomenal instructional coaches, who will tell you the highlights of the work that they are doing in their school building. Thank you.
You did talk fast, so maybe I can slow down a little bit. So, good evening, and thank you for having me. I am proud to say that this is year 35 for me in our district and all in elementary education. So, that feels really good to say. Myself, along with my amazing coaches, it's important for you to know that we have received two years of intensive coaching training. So, in addition to that, in addition to all the teaching experience that our coaches had coming into this position. So, specifically, we've had cognitive coach training, impact cycle training, and then facilitation, which is a problem-solving protocol. Last spring, when we came up with our coaching plans for this year, it was really important that we made sure we offered a variety of ways for teachers to engage in coaching because we need to meet them at all their differing needs. And as we know, we've got brand-new teachers, all the way to teachers who have 30-plus years of experience. And the reality is, coaching, there's research that shows coaching works for everybody, and everybody benefits from coaching. Just need to make sure we can find the way to meet their needs. And so, that was part of our plans as we developed them. So, I wanted to give you an example of how it looks at Tonda. I have teachers that have chosen to meet with me every week. They chose a standing day and time where we meet, sit down, the two of us together to plan. I have teachers who choose one to two times a month to work with me using a combination of their one out of the five preps they have each week, and then also signing up for a teacher-coach day, which the district offers, giving them a substitute teacher to go in and teach during a chunk of time when we can meet. In addition to that, all the coaches facilitate professional learning communities one to two times a month. We call them PLCs for short. And those are all topic-focused based, based on a combination of teacher feedback of needs, MyKIP School Improvement Program goals, and also the district's job-embedded professional development. So, we've got new curriculum that we're working on. UFLY, our foundational skills program, is still something we're working on. So, we facilitate that. Tomorrow is actually a great example of a PLC we have coming, where the teachers are going to be coming together to share different ways they are using weekly assessments to find out how their kids are doing and plan for their instruction. And at Tonda, I feel this year our PLCs have been really successful because we've been doing a lot of mixed, cross-grade-level collaboration, where teachers are getting a chance to hear from each other, support each other, and shine. We have our new teachers who have amazing ideas, and we have our seasoned teachers who have new ideas, or have new ideas and great old ideas that still encompass, I would say, the art of teaching. And combine that with the fact that we have a lot of new curriculum, and we have new learning based on the science of reading. And so, we need to be able to put that all together. And the PLCs have been a really, really successful way to do that. Some other examples of how I'm working with my teachers at school, one-on-one or in small groups, is looking at data. So, we saw DIBELS, and we saw NWEA. But the other piece that's really important when I meet with teachers on a week-to-week basis is looking at multiple data points. So, what's going on during the week in math? What assessments are they doing in math? What assessments are they doing in collaborative classroom, our new language comprehension? And then UFLY, which is our foundational skills, has progress monitoring that happens every week. So, helping them look at all that information and then figure out, okay, which are my kids that still are needing extra support? And what does that look like in small groups? Because that is how we are now differentiating more, is by making sure we're providing small-group instruction. So, it's really important that we know what needs to happen then. So, not only the kids that need the extra support, but what about the kids that have already mastered the grade-level content, and they need to be challenged? What's happening with those kids? So, those are conversations I'm having with teachers. Another big topic is because of foundational skills in UFLY. Although it is a K2 program whole group, it is a K5 program in small groups. Science of reading research shows us that if kids cannot decode accurately and automatically, it's going to affect their comprehension. So, they need to have those things in place. So, K2 is also doing small groups with UFLY, kids who need that extra dose. But our three, fourth, and fifth-grade teachers are now doing UFLY in small groups with the kids that aren't quite there yet with their automatic decoding and their fluency. And so, that's been a big shift for those teachers. So, often, what's happening is I'm coming in, and they're wanting to see, what does it look like? And so, I'm modeling for teachers with their students of how to do that. They're observing me, they're taking notes, they might even video. And then we're having a chance to talk about it and ask questions, get more information, until they feel comfortable, and maybe then we co-teach it together. And then eventually, they feel comfortable taking it over. So, that's another example of how it's been really successful. The cognitive load on elementary school teachers is huge. They teach all the subjects, and they help our humans become respectful, responsible people. So, trying to fit all of that content into all the instructional minutes is a puzzle. So, often, what I'm doing with teachers, we're having a hard time trying to get enough time for one piece, is we're going in and we're looking at how their instructional minutes are happening. And what do we need to do? What do we need to adjust? Again, do they need me to come and model how something can be done? Or sometimes they want to be videoed, and then they can watch themselves teach and see how it looks too. So, that's another example of what I do. I feel like I've shared a lot, and I want to make sure there's opportunities for questions, so...
And we did have a little more extensive conversation at SPA as well, but we wanted to bring to you just a glimpse into what it looks like, you know, for instructional coach work and things. And, you know, is there anything else you'd like to say before we open up for questions, Denise?
I'm going to go also.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's open it up for questions.
Thank you. I am actually going to start with our student co-chairs. Josh, Said, do you have any question?
I have no questions at this time, but thank you for all your amazing work at the elementary level. And I know that's where you start your learning journey, so thank you.
I also have no questions, but thank you for the amazing presentation and all the hard work you do.
Number Ahmed.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. And I just had one question in terms of what does the coaching placement look like per school? And are the coaches moving across the district? How is the placement?
Do you want to... Yes, we have one building-based coach at each of our elementaries. They are stationed at that elementary. We try to keep that same person in place multiple years, as long as it's working, the connection. We also have district coaches that rotate across, a couple of district coaches that rotate across the buildings and layer on as well. And then we also have coaches at the middle school and high school. Not at every building, but we have district ones that work across. And then we have coaches at the high school that are a part-time coach and also teach other sections, so that we can maximize the ability to coach at the high school level. So, that's typically what it looks like right now.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Like, when did they bring in the instructional coaches? Like, was that before COVID, after COVID, during COVID?
We've had a coaching model even prior to me. So, I've been in this district six years. There was a coaching model prior. We had fewer coaches at that time. About, I think it was three or four years ago, we shifted our model where we looked at our data around intervention and pull out intervention Tier 2 and Tier 3, found that it was not gaining the bang for the buck or the outcomes that we were looking for. So, we shifted to a more job-embedded Tier 1 instructional model, which is our instructional coaches. That's when we moved to the building-based coaches at each elementary. So, we utilized the same FTE and the same amount of funding, shifted into a different way to impact classroom instruction more explicitly first. Because if, in what's called the MTSS Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, you're trying to get to at least 80% of students being successful in Tier 1 instruction. And so, as we were seeing that we weren't getting there yet, we pushed in more at that first level. So, it's been, this is, I believe, the third year, second or third year, second year of this full model where we have 14 building-based coaches at the elementary.
Now, did I ask another question or something? So, I just, I was kind of curious about it because, you know, on our website, you know, it says we have highly qualified educators, and 81% of them hold, I'm sorry, 81% hold a master's degree or higher. I was just concerned at the extra funding or whatever for having other people telling them how to teach, kind of thing. And so, and I don't know, have you surveyed the teachers to see if they're, they like that? I mean...
So, all of us can improve our practice at all times. So, whether you're in your first year or your 41st year, Tom Brady has a quarterback coach, if you think about that, when he was one of the greatest quarterbacks in the history of the NFL. All of us can use coaches. So, a coach looks different. It is not a punitive model. It is not a model that is designed to say you're not doing well. It's a model designed to help build skills from where you are. So, that's when Kristin or Spurtoya talked about meetings, teachers where they are. So, every teacher can improve their practice, and it's just where we start from. Some people engage with a coach more often and things like that. It's not about the number of years of service also. It's about just building and growing your skill set wherever you are in your career. Additionally, we roll out new curriculum. We've made some pretty significant shifts over the last couple of years in our early, in our elementary literacy program. This is also a job-embedded way to help support that side-by-side with teachers about helping them unpack how to use the new curriculum, how those resources work, how to differentiate in the classroom, how to build small-group instructional practices. All of those things are engaged in all of this. It's a professional development model that happens side-by-side every day in the classroom in ways that we can't do when we just have the ability to do, like, one-day PD days here and there. So, it's really designed to be a deep level of professional development that helps build everybody's skill set, so...
Okay, and so, and how many interventionists do we have? Doing, like, that help the kids? Do they have one of those at every school or...
So, coaches help the kids too by helping the teachers help the students. But the, we do have some Title I interventionists and additional interventionists that will layer on as we, as students need additional support. In a Tier 1 model, you get to the point where fewer students are jumped to intervention because they are meeting their grade-level benchmarks and stuff earlier, and that's the data we're starting, we're seeing. So, as less students need intervention, the intervention program itself can only serve a small group of students. So, this is about impacting more students earlier to build the skill set so that we have to have less intervention later as well. So, when you get to Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions, extraordinarily costly programs, but also often what we saw in our data was we were jumping students too soon because we needed to solidify that Tier 1 first. That's why the shift in the model.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the informative presentation and all the work that you all put in. Couple of questions with the numbers. In one of the slides, you have 14 building-based coaches, and you've got 300 teachers, and this is for 23-24 school year. My wondering is if that number is consistent for 24-25 school year, or has that changed?
We'll bring that at the end of the year at the spring data. We'll have the number of, the full number of coaches or teachers that engage in coaching, as well as the number of full hours. We're in midst of it right now, so we just brought the in-progress data and the number of hours is that first piece of in-progress data. At the end of the year, you'll see that same type of data that you saw at the end of last year. We're just at a snapshot right now.
Okay. And then in the data set for 8-24 to 2-25, you have listed kindergarten, young five students, first grade. So, if we add all of those numbers up, that would give us the number of students that are being impacted by this? I'm just looking for a number of students that are impacted by this coaching model.
So, we have additional data that we are continuing to unpack. We've just closed one of our data cycles, and so, we will bring that data forward in our spring data review.
When you look at students that are impacted, though, we're impacting every teacher in the classroom, especially because we're doing professional development. The coaches are also leading, and maybe it wasn't as explicit, the coaches are also leading professional development for the building. So, they're training the teachers in the buildings to help train and build the model out as well. So, when we look at the fact that when we pull teachers on a PD day, we might have three hours that we can do a training around UFLY, for example, of a piece of UFLY. The coaches are side-by-side in the buildings with teachers every day, but they're also leading professional developments in the buildings directly with the staff. So, we maximize the ability to do job-embedded PD through a coaching model, and they're deeply trained in how to coach. That's what, as we talked about, the collaborative coaching, all the different models of coaching. It's, it is a skill set that is a deeply, is a deeply-trained skill set, and it is an evidence-based, highly-effective skill set, so...
I understand that. I'm just looking for the outcome on students. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking to narrow those gaps. We want to make sure all students are improving. So, that's what I'm trying to get at, is the number of students and what impact that's having. So, what I'm hearing is that you'll have that data set in more complete format in a later date. Yes, okay, thanks.
So, first, I want to thank you for the presentation, and thank my fellow board members for the good discussion because it provided a lot of context for me around the process. I'm especially excited about the focus on K through 2 and the small group work, especially around differentiation. I think that our magnet tag program is a great program, but providing opportunities for students in all levels for differentiation is great, as well as helping those students that need more in that process. So, I think it's a fantastic program. I'm really glad to see that. I did have a question kind of related to what was discussed here, and I think that Ms. Rail had kind of covered it, but it's really around reception. How are the teachers and everybody accepting or receiving this additional support? Do they see you as an ally, or do they see you as a... Do they see you as an ally or do they see you as a, as someone that's giving you some supervision?
Great question, right? And, and so I will say the difference even from last year to this year, because while I've been teaching for over 30 years, Tonda was a new home for me three years ago. And so I had to build trust. So it, that took time. And so this year, beginning of this, this year, we saw a big change with people realizing she really is on my side and our conversations are between us. And if they want to see what's going on, if, if our administrators want to see what's going on, then they go into the classroom or they check the data and see, but our conversations are our conversations, so. And, and even to mention with the experienced seasoned teachers, I've got teachers I work with that are phenomenal teachers and they value our conversations together because one of them will say, I love how you, you push me to think, think outside the box because she always wants to learn new things, but she's got these amazing ideas, but then we've got all the student learning and we've got the science of reading. And so to be able to work with a coach and talk through it all and process where to go, but it, it's been a process, but we're there. We're there.
If I could just add on to it, I think part of the thing that's really important to understand is that individuals like Kristin, I'm gonna brag about her for a second, have created this culture where staff feel comfortable being vulnerable. We have at our school some absolutely outstanding teachers structurally, some individuals I would consider to be master teachers. And it is not uncommon for me to see them in her office, sitting side-by-side, working on plans either for individual students or working on small group differentiation. And, and these are people who are, are masterful at the practice, at the art. But they care enough about students to make decisions based on what is best for students, not necessarily what's easy for adults. And so they, they utilize her and that's a, a big reason, I think, why we were probably asked to be here is because of that culture that she's created around collaboration.
Thank you. And I think, sure, that's a testament to both your, your, your teachers and your coaches and I'm sure that that is replicated throughout the district. So thank you.
So, kind of to pick up on the discussion about who, who has coaching and who takes advantage of it, we are fortunate in the SPA committee to have a couple of retired teachers and the former teachers. And that was a major question of theirs is who gets coaching because they've been in schools that have, have modeled the, the, that the teachers that were struggling got it or only the new, new, you know, the junior teachers got coaching. And we had a very robust conversation around it and, you know, really seriously, it is for all teachers and it is a benefit to all students as well, as opposed to kind of the, the higher levels of tier instruction, which is only for the, only for a student or a small group of students. And I likened it to, you know, I have 35 years in my profession and I've actually coached and taught more junior people in my career, but I still have professional training that I have to take every year. I still have, you know, requirements that, that my employer requires us to do. And it's the same thing. It's, it's all to improve my, you know, keep us on the top of our game or improve our game, no matter what level we start at. So I think it's a phenomenal model and I'm grateful that, that we have it at PCCS because it was clear from our discussion that we are kind of unique in having coaching available to everyone. So I really hope that as the budget changes and everything that we continue this program.
Member Boss.
Thank you. No question.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And continuing in the vein of kind of some informative updates and stuff, I want to welcome to the podium Stephanie Hayes, our Executive Director of Special Ed, who's going to share with us about special ed programming in the district. So we did this presentation last month, month before this in SPA and wanted to bring it forward just to kind of update the board and our community around all the special ed programming that we have in, in, in the district and the great work that's being done. So welcome to Stephanie.
Good evening. I had to move the mic down. She's way taller than me. I, I'm gonna put a plug in to say thank you for the approval of the PAC representatives and thank you to Jessica and Ashley. They're gonna be joining myself and the administrative team in our special ed PAC. So I'm looking forward to that work and they're here, so thank you for being, being here. All right. So I was asked to give a brief overview of special education, what we have here in the district. As you know, we always work with our department and align with our supports, with our dynamic plan, so looking at those items there, which you've seen many a times. Also, moving forward in terms of connecting our focus is connecting our teaching and learning strategic objectives through student learning and growth and also student support. And of course, looking at our next slide is tied to always what we want out of our learner profile and we always look for those outcomes that are identified in our learner profile and all of our work that we do with our students. As we move forward, looking into tonight's presentation, a brief overview of what we're gonna cover. The next slide, it just gives you an idea of our leadership that we currently have in our special education department. Amazing humans doing amazing work. And now to get to the good stuff. So special education is programs and services. It is not a place. One more time, special ed is programs and services. It is not a place. I think that historically, there's been some myths out there about it is a place for you to go, it's a thing for you to go get. Realistically, all of our students are general education students and we get programs and services to support above and beyond when needed for the curriculum and accessing our same-age peers. So moving to the next slide, special education, one of the primary tenets of special ed is what's called child find. It's a federal requirement established through the Individuals with Disabilities Act and it is a responsibility that we all have to identify, locate, and evaluate all children with disabilities through the federal ages of zero to 21. But here in Michigan, which we're the only state that does have this child find and special education through ages 25. So we're still the only state currently that functions through age 25 for special ed. And the child find process is to ensure that we are looking for identifying and providing the evaluation tools, the supports, and making sure that we're accessing students that may have needs. This is just an overview. We provide services from zero to 26 here in PCCS. Next one? There we go. This is a little bit small, but I did pull two specific data points off of the My School data, which is an accessible tool for resources, looking at all types of data across the board. And so I pulled two resources there that are tied to the 23, 24 count. So they usually update that. They're a little behind, like a year behind every, every year. Right now, we're close to this anyway, so it's a good representation. Our current special education count is at about 11.7%. So we're at about 12%. That's a common, a, a, a common percentage across the county as well as across the state. There's some districts just below, some districts, you know, a little bit higher. So right, we're right in that, really in that catch spot. The bottom chart is giving a little bit more specific of the zero to 26 age group, so that's broken down for you to take a look at as well. In terms of student counts, again, 23, 24, just to be upfront, this is looking at students' eligibility. So the different eligibility's in Michigan, we have 13 eligibility's that students can qualify under. We do have a high number of students that are qualifying for what's called speech and language only. You might hear that term used. So speech and language is a, one of our higher eligibility categories. Is same thing as looking at our otherwise health impaired. And, and so those couple, two, three, four, are looking at SLD, severe learning, specific learning disability, and of course autism spectrum disorder, which we know has had such an increase in our, in our nation. This is broken down by programs. So I indicated to you earlier, we have programs and services. So the overview for our programs component is tied to early on, so you're zero to three, you're babies, you're early childhood, so you're three to five-year-olds. We have resource program in every building in the K-12 buildings. So resource program is one of the more commonly lesser restrictive supportive programs. Then we do have what we call categorical programs, such as for students with an emotional impairments, cognitive impairments, and then also our autism spectrum disorder program, which is a Wayne County program that we support here in PCCS. And we do have a lot of those classrooms across the district in different buildings at all the different, different levels. And we do support what's called our Western Wayne region of Wayne County. So we do help out and rely on each other for programming when it comes to Wayne County-supported Services are more inclusive of things that you may hear, like I have, my child has speech services. They get OT, occupational therapy, teacher consultant supports. These are considered the services component. And here's a list of those wonderful opportunities that our kids have when they need them. So probably one of my, I guess, most important slides that I just wanted to, you know, kind of give you a little background on is what you've probably heard over your time being in and out of schools and things of that nature, which is called least restrictive, least restrictive environment. The IDEA, so the Individuals with Disability Education Act, states that each public agency must ensure to the maximum extent appropriate that children with disabilities are educated with children who are non-disabled. IDEA uses the term public agency and to me, I thought it was imperative for this slide to be here with all of us and all of you and everyone that's on this, this video and everywhere, because it literally includes each of you, includes myself, making sure that our gen ed teachers, our administrators, special education teams, and yes, even the Board of Education of the public agency. So meaning it's our, all of our responsibility, not just because I'm the Executive Director of special ed. So it's, it's a comprehensive village approach to LRE, least restrictive environment. So this slide, it's kind of hard to see, but you have it in your packets and you can see it on probably the web or whatever that wonderful Diane helps us get to. It just talks about the continuum. Our responsibility as a public agency to make sure that we have a continuum of services. And it talks about least restrictive at the very bottom, including general education. On the left-hand side, it says least and then the arrow goes up and it talks about looking at the different layers of continuum that we're responsible to provide for all of our students that have disabilities and at the least restrictive, and we must exhaust all those opportunities, then collect data and look for that next step if needed. One more? There we go. This is just a, kind of the last overview comment about our department focus area currently. You know, I've been here since August, been really trying to work on relationships, retention and recruitment of our amazing staff, wanting to do a shout-out to our department. They're constantly the middle people. They're the saviors. They're the go-tos. They're the people who take the good and the bad and I think they do an exceptional job and I just want to give kudos to them. We also are working on that department alignment. In a district this big, we have to be aligned in our approaches and our philosophies and our mindsets, so we have to have those layers of support. And that's where I come in, working with my supervisors, working with our teacher consultants, and you name it. It just continues because if we don't have alignment, we're gonna have all these pieces out there and they're not gonna be together, working on the same common goal. And then the last part, super excited for our PAC. Questions?
Thank you. I'll start with our student co-chair.
I have no questions at this time, but thank you for your amazing work and all the support you give to our students and people of Ollie. Just thank you.
I also have no questions, but thank you for the amazing presentation.
Member Ahmed.
I just had one question. What are you finding the biggest challenge in providing these programs and services towards students?
Just one? Staffing, you know, ensuring that we have staffing is a key, right? We, we want to continue to recruit and retain. So it's a big deal and that's also part of my, my why, is to make sure that I'm providing what our staff here need so they stay. And also, hey, tell your friends, let's do this, come on over and be part of our work. So that's a big one that we're all experiencing across the nation.
Thank you. To follow up on that, I mean, do you have any ideas? We heard last time about the challenges and the staffing gaps. So, you know, I mean, I don't know how you can overcome people coming, but at the same time, do you have any new ideas for recruitment or anything like that? You mentioned reception, which I appreciate.
Yeah, for sure.
But also for recruitment, do you have any special ideas or anything?
Yeah, I mean, we're reaching out to, I think our universities are key, getting, you know, a lot of, doing any of the internships or, you know, those work opportunities that come before they can get their licensure. That really brings people in the door. And then once you get them, then you hook them, then they want to stay, right? We, I'm not too shy to steal anymore. So those kind of things do happen, but truthfully, I don't want others doing that to us either, so I really have to work hard at that.
So scrub that from the video.
Yeah, all's fair, right? You know, we're, we're, we're trying to be as competitive as we can. We're trying to be as open and engaging and welcoming as we can and being out, out, right? Networking, talking with people, putting our word out on the street and also being vulnerable to know that we always have work to do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hi, thank you. I just had a question as a public agency. So I've heard, you know, the incidences where like a, a teacher will have to remove her class, you know, because somebody's having an outburst or something like that. How is that handled then? Is that happening a lot or, you know, because I find that hard then for the whole class and like what can they do? Like is there a reason why, like do they call somebody? What is, you know, it seems like there's some helplessness there.
Yeah, I, I would say there's actually probably our biggest teamwork that occurs during those opportunities and situations. Behavior is communication and it's our job to figure out the why. So we work within our team that is either trained in specific behavior intervention strategies. Also, we have non-violent physical crisis intervention training that works on those proactive strategies as well. We, we try to minimize impact on everyone while also making sure that we are still targeting the needs of every individual. That's the whole premise of the IDEA, is the individual work that's necessary to make sure all of our kids have access to the curriculum and to their same-age peers.
Okay. So, so they, do they, because I don't know, like some of the teachers, are they trained enough to even know how to handle a situation?
Yeah, those that do.
And if it happens multiple a times, would that student then be removed or how do they?
Sure. So those that are trained, that have the training are traditionally those that are working with students, that, that may need that level of support for a period of time. We don't want untrained individuals doing that work. That's why our special ed teams are highly trained and individualized according to their behavior plans and working with their teams, social workers, psychologists, the family. We do a lot of wraparound work, which is working with outside supports and referrals as well, so that we can work together on those needs and always trying to keep the bigger picture in mind, but also keeping it narrow to the individual needs per their rights as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I'm just concerned because, you know, I'm thinking if I was second grade or third grade, that how the other kids would respond and just that tension between that would, you know, maybe nervous, scared.
One thing I would say too is it's not just our students with special, that are in special education that have behavior challenges. So we work really hard on helping train and behavior supports across and, and learning how to de-escalate. We've done de-escalation training with staff and things like that. So I did just want to say that because I think sometimes there's a misconception that it's only certain groups of students that might have some behavioral that it's only certain groups of students that might have some behavioral challenges and that is far from, you know.
I understand that totally, I would say the same thing.
So, yes, we do a lot of work around, we've done a lot of work around de-escalation training with many of our staff members. And we just continue to also just support all those needs. As Stephanie talked about, we've done NCBI training, nonviolent crisis intervention training. We have teams in every building that have the ability to respond as well.
Thank you. You too, for your presentation.
Thanks Stephanie.
Sure.
I want to go to the slide where you talk about Childfind. It's a federal requirement, is there any federal funding that comes with that?
Sorry, I try not to laugh, but. So, so the IDEA has never been fully funded to fruition from when it's in inception in the seventies. So we have still yet to see the full funding that is supposed to come along with IDEA. But we do obviously have some that's tied to the IDEA grant, so the individual, that supports Childfind and everything else. It's not an individual piece.
Got it, got it, thanks for the clarification.
Yep, you're welcome.
From what I heard, I went to DC to advocate for IDEA being fully funded.
Thank you.
The promise was, I believe, forty percent and we are at, what, eleven percent?
So in terms of the funding of IDEA?
Yeah.
I, I'd have to check here honestly. I apologize, I don't have that off the top. It went up, it went up in the last two, three years and then I think we've plateaued again, to be honest.
To that point, if interested, there is, you know, there's continued advocacy each year. And so if the board would be interested in hearing and adopting a resolution in support of that full funding, that would be something we would absolutely welcome on behalf of our school.
I mean, given the numbers that you shared and the need particularly with staff and parent pros, I can't imagine how difficult your work is, given that you don't have a full staff to work with all of these needs. And really, really important work when we look at all of the kids that we have and that we serve. So that brings me to my second question, which is around the slide that talks about special ed programs starting with early on.
Okay.
At the bottom of the slide, you share emotionally impaired programs. You have two in elementary, one in middle school. What does that look like in high school?
Yeah, that's a great question. Are you talking about this slide? No.
No, one.
One more? Okay, whoa, okay, you get the idea. So, so that's a great question. What we are trying to do with our younger students is truly to establish those regulations within them, create those skills, help them with their learning along with their skill set for behavior, regulation, emotional regulation, choices, et cetera, at the younger ages. We are assessing whether or not the needs are, if there is a need to continue emotionally impaired programming at the high school. It's a question I, I have being new, so I'm assessing that currently. And, and really want to take a good look at what we are doing at the elementary, middle and see if that is truly matriculating up where they're able to be successful in a lesser restrictive environment.
Got it. I appreciate you doing that analysis rather than just, you know, going in and saying, hey, there's a gap, let's fill it. But being really intentional about where the needs are, so thanks for that.
For sure, for sure. Can I tell you though, just one comment, I do have some super exceptional staff that are in the position. So we're not like without people in our positions. Yes, some of them may be new educators, they may be in school in the parent-to-teacher program or those kind of things. They're doing exceptional work as long-term subs, et cetera. So I just want to be upfront, we're not vacancies where we're not able to do something for our kids. We, we do want to continue to look though, right? And, and to have those staff become hopefully highly qualified staff and stay on board.
Yes, thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
My last one is not a question, but more of a statement and a wondering for all of us, which is, are there any programs that we could collectively work on to advocate for which would bring scholarships for young students to get a special ed degree in college, fully funding their degree to go into this program, which is needed? So more of a wondering, I don't know where to go with that.
We're currently involved in the Talent Together program. So we are a host district for Talent Together. We have six candidates currently in the district, not all of special education, but that is a statewide program.
So are there scholar, do they get free tuition?
So what kind of happens is that we have, well, we have six people in there. We have, I believe, two parents is doing this, so parents are going to special education. So what happens is that the program, the state pays them, they have the employees of a district. The state actually pays their salary while they're taking courses and whatnot to become a certified teacher.
Very nice.
So it's a pathway to get there. So it's one of the, there's that, there's other, there's some other alternative pathways for people to get certifications. And so those are starting to expand as the state is trying to say, hey, we got to do something and give easier paths for people to get to proper certifications.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions around the numbers and one just around classifications or categorizations. When we talk about special education students, sometimes we hear things like IEPs and 504s. At least as far as I understand, and I could be wrong, that's why I'm asking the question. This really is about students that have IEPs. 504s are not included in the numbers that you've provided, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. We have approximately a thousand additional students with a 504, a section 504 plan, which is also a accommodation plan. And it's not as, as restrictive or doesn't have the additional legal, additional legal requirements as an IEP, individualized educational program.
Perfect, thank you for providing that context and clarity. The second question I have is on the numbers. You broke out the number of students that we have in school age five through twenty-one and then you separately categorized twenty-two to twenty-six. And I, I know that we have some center-based programs and things like that that support students after graduation from high school, but they would still be in most cases included in those numbers that would be under the twenty-one number, correct?
So a student that has an individual education plan, once they graduate with a diploma, they are exited from special education. So the students that are in the post-secondary programming, I don't know if that's me or you Diane, but I hit the button. So, oh, thank you. I was like, whoa, it was going and I didn't do it. So the post-age students are typically, generally speaking, students that have modified curriculum and may have moderate to more severe eligibility's and needs, intensive needs.
Got it. And so those programs may start at an age earlier than twenty-two though, for example, in this breakout.
Yes, that, this is broken out in the federal, by the federal law through twenty-one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then Michigan goes twenty-two to twenty-six.
I just was trying to understand what the distinction was between that process. So thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, no problem.
And then my last question is, is I'm sure many of our board members have mentioned is, what can we do for you? What are the resources that you need? We're starting the budget transformation process, so get your requests in through your.
I'm working on mine as well. And, and our staffing process and I look forward to working on that with everyone here.
You guys do some of the best work and most important work that we do in the district to serve those students that need extra. And we really appreciate and value their, their work and their experience.
I appreciate that very much. Any, anything you can do to support LRE and support individualized needs and, and really know that we're doing the right thing for each individual student that we can is the best thing we can, we can do for each other. It takes of all of us.
Thank you.
I think most of the points that I wanted to cover have already been covered, but I just wanted to add the fact this was originally a presentation to the SPA committee and it was so informative and so, so needed in this time of potential budget cuts at the federal level or at the state level that the committee asked that this presentation be brought forward precisely for the reason that I think some of you are saying is how can we best support this program and make sure that it gets the funding and the support that it needs because it is so important. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thanks.
I don't have any questions. I just, I just want to thank you and your team and especially the teachers and the parents because I know how hard they work and how important what all of you are doing is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I echo my fellow board member's sentiments.
You're welcome, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Just one wondering, I'm actually signed up to take a peer-to-peer class next year. And I was wondering, are you, with those students that enjoy the peer-to-peer classes, working and trying to get them to follow that career path and then come back to work here?
Yes, yes, and yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have action item number twenty-five dash zero-three dash fifty-two. Consider approval of a resolution for advanced placement AP chemistry course materials. This is a final reading, can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for advanced placement AP chemistry course materials. This is action item twenty-five oh-three fifty-two and this is a final reading.
Can I have a second?
A second?
We have a tie. It was moved, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member Picard. We did talk about this at our last meeting, Member Picard took that book all over the place with her and read it. So at this point, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Okay, great, on to Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick.
Good evening, thank you President Christensen, good evening Board and Community. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening an overview, a summary of the mid-year budget amendment for this current school year. Recall that the original budget that was adopted this past June was according to state law to adopt that by June thirtieth. But that was of course before the school year started. We didn't know our enrollment, we didn't know what state aid would bring, a number of factors. So there were so many assumptions and projections involved in the original budget that this evening we're here to bring forward those updates, those things that we know now, including the audit results that were conducted over the summer, August through October, as well as projections and reconciling some of those assumptions that are inherent in our original budget. So with that then, we will bring forward also a final amendment as we get closer to the end of the year to really refine our numbers and our projections as to where we will land on June thirtieth. So before I begin, I want to thank Jody Melvin also. She's our, our Executive Director of Finance and Accounting and I very much appreciate her collaboration and all of her work together in this process. So we always begin our work with a connection to the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Dynamic Plan. So strategic goal A, Plymouth Canton Community Schools will increase achievement for all students and close achievement gaps. This is achieved our strategic objective F and O one and two. Align financial resources, including state and federal resources to areas of greatest need as support for individual students as identified through academic achievement data. As well as strategic goal B, all Plymouth Canton Community Schools students and staff will report that they feel physically, psychologically and emotionally safe and represented at school. We achieve that through strategic objective F and O four. Align financial resources to the areas of greatest need to support the social, emotional needs of all staff and students. So now I got way ahead, I apologize. So this evening, we'll start with a bit of historical financial data just to set the table and why the assumptions that we make are important. And then we will go through a general fund summary, both the original budget and then those associated amendments. So we'll start with our enrollment. Recall that primary, our fund, our primary funding source for school operations is school state aid. And that is a function of enrollment of pupils, the number of, of students enrolled. And then a dollar value we receive from the state and local sources called the state foundation allowance per pupil. So here, we start with a look at our enrollment. And we can see that prior to COVID, we had pretty steady enrollment. And then in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we see a bar with a little green topper on it. And that was the year after COVID. And so at the state of Michigan, districts, we counted our students, if you will, with what they call the super blend. And it was because after COVID, many, many school districts across our state saw a very vast enrollment decline. And so it was kind of an artificial heightened enrollment to preclude financial distress so that it could kind of stem the tide of, of the enrollment decline and not be quite as impactful financially. So that's what that green bar means at the top of that blue line in twenty-twenty-one. But since that time, you can see then that true value of our enrollment numbers that continue to just slowly decline just a bit, but that is an area for, for work in our district for sure. Before we advance the slide, the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, we went into our budget with the assumption that our enrollment would be based on sixteen thousand one hundred students. And the fall count was sixteen thirty-four, sixteen thousand thirty-four students. So the other part of that equation, enrollment and foundation allowance, is depicted here, foundation allowance. And there's a lot on this chart, so I'll walk you through. You can see the dollar value per pupil over the last ten years. It has risen pretty much steadily each year. But you'll notice for this year, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we are at the same per pupil foundation amount. So we saw no increase in the per pupil allowance. We saw some other revenues that we'll get to, but this is our primary source of revenue. And in our original budget, we had projected an increase in this dollar value of two hundred and forty-one dollars per pupil. I'll get into the other revenue in a little bit, but this did result in a reduction in revenue on one line item of about three point nine million dollars as a result. On top of that, the other data point that is shown here on this chart, you'll see asterisks above twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-five. That is to demonstrate that the School Finance Research Collaborative in the state of Michigan, they had done a volume of research and suggested that the base cost to educate a student per pupil, adjusted for inflation in today's dollars, is about twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars per pupil. So if we look at that as a data point backed by research, we can see then that we have about a twenty-five hundred dollar funding gap per pupil this year alone or, and that is equivalent to forty-one point one million dollars for this year alone. So if we think about the sustainability, the proper funding that is required to properly educate our students, we have quite a gap. On this slide, we showcase our ending fund equity. It's sometimes called ending fund balance. And fund balance by definition is not cash, money in the bank. It's simply an accumulation of excess revenues and excess expenditures each year, year over year. And it is sometimes used as an indication of our ability to meet financial obligations or unexpected shifts in our revenues or expenditures. So looking at the chart, we can see that from fifteen to about twenty-twenty, we steadily increased our fund equity. And since COVID, we have kind of ebbed and flowed. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a heightened fund balance, if you will. We were able to add about six thousand dollars to our fund balance that year through a couple of different ways. But for twenty-four, twenty-five, our original budget, you can see had a planned use of that fund balance, a bit of a decline. But those blue boxes represent some metrics that we want to adhere to. So at the top, it indicates that our auditor's recommendation and auditors across the state of Michigan recommend a fund balance equivalent to about fifteen percent of our expenditures. So you can see by that green bar, we do exceed that recommendation. Secondly, our board policy calls for fund balance to be equivalent or more than ten percent of our expenditures. And of course, we meet that. And then the state also has a statute on this. And they require that the fund balance is equivalent or more to five percent of revenues. So we clearly meet all those metrics. Excuse me. But that is a, a general showcase of our ending fund balances at the end of each year as audited by our external auditors. This is the same chart, but a little bit different representation here. The orange bars at the top of each of the blue bars represents, it says on the screen that it represents the portion of the fund balance derived from our county enhancement millage funds. And maybe another way to say that, because we do use those funds. But that, it also depicts where our fund balance levels would be, which is at the top of the blue portion, without those funds. And so these, this enhancement millage is less than two mills across the county. And so this enhancement millage is less than two mills across the county, and it was recently renewed in November 24, 2024, and we're very grateful for that because this general fund and these monies go right toward our primary operating fund, our general fund. It's all of our classrooms, our teachers, everything that makes it happen in the classroom, people's supports and teacher's supports as well, as well as all of the other functionalities that go around to support the district. So with those sets of data and charts, we'll move on then to take a close look at the general fund mid-year budget amendment. So this is just a brief summary, really, of the original general fund budget. And we know that this is the primary operating fund of the district. It counts for all of our K-12 daily programs, as I mentioned. And I'll just point out that our bond program, our food service, and student clubs, those kinds of things are accounted for in separate funds. So this is just the primary operating fund of the district. So to recap, in the original budget that was adopted last June, that budget called for total projected revenues of $219.7 million and total expenditures of $225.8 million. So we had a planned use, a net change in fund balance, of $6.1 million. So we are going to deplete that fund balance a bit to cover the costs of our primary objectives and our priorities in connection with the dynamic plan. We also, as part of that adopted budget, had forecasted that at the end of the year, June 30th or July 1st, that we would have a fund balance at that time of $43 million to start this fiscal year. So when we add that net change in fund balance, that use of that fund balance of $6.1 million to the $43 million beginning fund balance, then we land at a projected fund balance for June 30th, '25, of $36.9 million. Now, we can see that that is equivalent to about 16.8% of our revenues and about 16.4% of our expenditures. So we meet all of those three metrics that were depicted in that prior slide. So with that as a starting point, then, I will go into a summary of the amendments, and there are many. This is an excerpt of the materials in your packet. So to start with revenues, at the top of the chart there, we have revenues. The first two lines, one and two, are local source revenues. So here we have an adjustment in our local property tax revenue projection. And that's because taxable values have increased in our residential area. And so we anticipate those property tax collections to increase over our original assumptions by about $2.3 million. And then we have some other miscellaneous types of local revenues, interest revenues and other things that total about $714,000. Then we move into our state source revenues. Line three says, adjust state school aid per pupil foundation revenue. So this value here, a decrease of $5.2 million, is comprised of a couple of things. First is about the $3.9 million I mentioned earlier because of not receiving that per pupil foundation allowance increase that we had planned. But it also includes, then, just that shift of the $2.3 million from state revenue to local. The foundation allowance amount is comprised of a local and a state portion. So, and I apologize if I didn't mention this on the previous slide, but for our per pupil foundation amount of $9,608, it has a local component, which is generated by those 18 mills that we levy on businesses. And we're very grateful to our community for renewing that as well just about a year ago, last February. So with that component, it's also matched or made whole by a state component. That is generated by the six mills of state education tax per homeowners. So the local money is collected by the county and is shared with our district, whereas the state education tax is sent to the state, sent to the county, but sent to the state. And then that is turned back out to make us whole on our foundation amount. So the state makes us whole. So when our property tax ebbs and flows, so does the state portion. So back on line three, again, that is the adjustment of the foundation allowance amount that we were anticipating receiving. As I have to imagine, most districts in the state of Michigan, it was quite a surprise that there wasn't an increase in that level of funding. And then the shift from the local to the state, or rather, from state funding to local. And there was a small adjustment for that enrollment decline as well. But then on line four, in fact, line four, five, six, and seven, you see some acronyms there. MIPSers, that's the Michigan Public Schools Employees Retirement System. And retirement is a significant cost for public schools. But on line four, it says, we need to add in MIPSers Section 147A4. That's a part of the State School Aid Act. And this amount of nearly $6.8 million is equivalent to about 5.75% of the employer capped retirement rate. So although we didn't receive the per pupil foundation allowance increase that we were anticipating, in lieu of that, we did receive $6.8 million in that type of funding. And the expectation for that is not just for retirement, but also in order to support mental health, to support our operating expenditures, to be used in a variety of ways that the state wants us to document and track, but not just for retirement. Line five also speaks to MIPSers, and that's a cost offset. So it's a series of line items in our state aid that helps offset those retirement costs, and those revenues increased over our projections of about $2.9 million. Line six refers to the MIPSers UAAL rate stabilization revenues. So this is an unfunded extrarial accounting liability that stems from the retirement fund being underfunded. And so with that, the state, in recent years, has provided revenues to the district to offset that cost, but then it is considered a pass-through, and we return it right to the state seven days later. On line seven, we have another retirement line item. This is for the healthcare fund. So the retirement system has a pension fund as well as a healthcare fund. Employees at the time were able to opt in or out of that healthcare fund for retirees. Yet, we have learned that that fund is now fully funded as of this school year. So that was discovered at a later time than employees started to make their contributions for this year. So the state is offering monies to reimburse employees who have been making that contribution. It's not a dollar for dollar, but yet it is monies to help reimburse employees who have been making that contribution, even though the fund is funded. Then we move into other state aid line items. Line eight, to adjust the state aid transfer to Act 18 Fund for center programs. Act 18 Center Programs are our special education programs that Stephanie was speaking of, and we have to transfer our state aid to that separate fund to account for that and move those stated revenues generated by those pupils there. We have some simple adjustments for categorical funding such as vocational education and at-risk programs. And then we have some prior year adjustment income that stems from prior year adjustments in special education funding, $954,000 for that. Then we have adjustments for that Act 18 Center Program reimbursement. So through Wayne Reeser, our Indianmania School District, there's a two-year look back on cost reimbursements that get reconciled. It goes through a system and then is reimbursed or not to the district. And then line 12 and 13 are also other types of adjustments. Wayne Reeser, other types of cost reimbursements, and other revenues is quite a bit less than we anticipated this year, a reduction from our projections of nearly $1.4 million, and then just some transfers between funds. So all in all, the net sum of all of those revenue adjustments is about a $2 million reduction from our original projections. And given all of those different changes, $2 million is substantial. I'm glad that it isn't more. And then going to the expense side of the ledger, line 14 is to adjust all the salaries and benefits for all of the staff that are accounted for in this fund. It includes adjustments for those finalized negotiated salaries that didn't happen before the end of the year, before the budget was adopted. It accounts for changes in healthcare costs, retirement costs. It accounts for adjustments in staffing, retirements, and then replacing those folks with maybe someone at a different salary level. And then, of course, placements as we needed to fill gaps across the district. So it's kind of an all-in on all the salaries and benefits in this fund. Salaries and benefits account for 85% of this fund. So when we have total expenditures at that level of $225, $226 million, that's a significant portion. So to have increases and decreases that level out to a net amount of a decrease of about $733,000, that's a very minimal adjustment there. Line 15 is an adjustment to our pupil support services to meet student needs. That includes such things as guidance counselors, nurses, speech and language pathologists. And then line 16 is an adjustment for other types of services, not necessarily tied directly to student needs, liability insurance, and services that we obtain through our Wayne Reeser, school activities, special education transportation, and just adjustments through all kinds of line items that amount to about $500,000. Line 14 and 15, or rather, 17 and 18 go hand in hand. This is a shift in our maintenance and operations departments to account for supplies and work orders in a more appropriate way to better align with state of Michigan guidelines. So where we would normally have a work order for a repair at a building, previously, we accounted for that as a supply. We are now shifting that to account for that as a service, a repair service, whatever that work order might require. So we just wanted to detail that here because you will see a shift then when we summarize in our monthly reports. We talked about it, FNO, the very exciting committee work that we do, as well as at the end of the year and the beginning of the year, we summarize those costs, not just by function, but by objective, salaries, benefits, services, supplies. So that becomes important there. So we wanted to be sure we delineated that. But that just is a net of about $260,000 shift. But of that increase to those expenditure line items, about $150,000 of that is attributable to investments and enhancements in ADA accessibility. So we're excited about that. A lot of concrete work at the paths, at the park, elevator access, card reader access, and those kinds of things that are very important. So that accounts for most of that increase on those line items. And then we have just an adjustment on school supply budgets and other miscellaneous expenses throughout the 12,000 or so line items that we have on the expenditure ledger. So when we take all of those mid-year expense adjustments, they total about $282,000. Again, not too much on a $226 million budget. But nonetheless, each of those line items are very important and are big numbers. So when we take that $2 million downward adjustment of revenue and the $282,000 increase on expenditures, and we add that then to our original budget, then we can look at our details of where we land with an amended budget. And I'll walk you through this chart so that we can read it together. Of course, in the first column is just the line item descriptions. But when we look down the first numerical column, the 2425 adopted original budget, this is a summary of the budget we adopted in June. Again, we see those total revenues and total expenditures and the use of the fund balances I detailed before, and that beginning fund balance of $43 million, and then that projected ending fund balance of $36.9 million. Moving then to the right, the next column is the total amendments. So there we see those total revenue and total expenditure adjustments, which is a net change, another reduction to our fund balance of nearly $2.3 million. And then in the far right column, the 2425 proposed amended budget, then, when we add the amendments to our original budget, we end with a projected total revenue budget of $217.7 million, total expenditure budget projected at $226.1 million. And then that net change in fund balance is a use of $8.4 million. Now, when we read down that column, we see a beginning fund balance audited figure. And that's different than our originally projected beginning fund balance. And that's because we had our audit in the summer, from August until October. So when we adopted the budget in June, we did not know quite yet what that beginning fund balance would be. So now we've included that audited beginning fund balance. We've reset that. So now we apply that use of fund balance of $8.4 million to the beginning fund balance of $49.1 million. So we have a new projected ending fund balance of, and I have to correct that number, I apologize. It's $40,772,967. So $40.7 million of an ending fund balance. Yet, those percentages are correct, and so we still meet the requirements of the state, our auditors, and of course, our board policy. So with that, then, what are our next steps? Well, we will continue to monitor our revenues and expenditures. We do report out monthly to the Finance and Operations Committee, taking a look at the general fund across the board. We compare it to last year. We have a lot of really good conversations around what types of metrics we should be comparing to. What do these numbers mean? Are they trending? Are they telling a story? What is the story behind the numbers? So with that, we'll continue to monitor those revenues and expenditures in our general fund. And then, as I mentioned, we'll bring forward a final amendment in June for your consideration and review. And at that time, then, we will know even more about our state aid and our expenditures. And we still have a lot of work to do around this fiscal year that ends in June, in July and August. So accounting rules say that when we receive bills or monies that really belong to the time period before June 30, we have to accrue those back to the books. And so although the fiscal year ends, we still have a lot of work to do before we can close those books. But this work will all, of course, be concurrent with our 2526 budget work. So we have already started to plan next year's budget as well. And of course, where we land this year will impact those decisions and budget planning for next year as well. So we're always looking to refine these numbers. We have our eyes and ears on them. Jody and I are always looking at our transactions and being sure that they are completely and accurately recorded so we can monitor those. So thank you for your attention. I'm happy to take any questions you have on our proposed amended budget. Thank you. Start with our student co-chairs.
First of all, thank you for all your dedication to this work. It was a lot of numbers before and after a time change at 9:30 at night. I have no specific questions. I just wanted to thank you. And then, actually, no, I did one question. For the budgets, have you done the budget survey for the upcoming fiscal year?
Thank you for that question. Yes, the budget, or rather, the survey has closed. And so we'll be bringing those community budget survey results back to the Finance and Operations Committee for review. And then we will also present them at the next board meeting in April.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Number one.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, this is twice, so thank you.
Just want to do the correction on that number.
Yes, please. The number in the detailed work that's in your packet, this document, it reads that the projected fund balance is $40,772,000, and I apologize. It's 40772967.
So that's what that number should be?
It is. I apologize for that error. We've...
Okay, thanks.
Now I'm embarrassed because we spent an hour going through these presentations, or more, last Thursday, and we all missed that number. I'm glad you caught that. Thank you so much.
We're always reviewing.
We talked a lot about the line items and the impact of those things and the step around the other things, so around the MIPSers projects and the UAAL and everything else. I do want to thank Ms. Minnick and Ms. Melvin for all the hard work that goes into this process. I'm pleased to see that we're keeping our fund balance to the right parameters and that we've been good stewards of the public money as part of this process. But this is a planned use of fund balance budget, so I want to remind everybody at the board and everybody in the community that this is unsustainable. We need more, if we're going to continue to support the programs that we have, the great programs that we heard today, like special education and the other work that we do, then we need to have more revenue. And it's really, quite frankly, unacceptable that our state legislature did not, and governor, did not give us a foundation allowance increase last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your hard work on this. It's excellent. And I just want to echo what Member Kehoe said about that it's not sustainable, and we need to work with our state government to get more funding.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Can I just say, I apologize, but your presentation was so thorough. So thank you for going through that item by item, so we know exactly where that money was going and coming. So I want to, just thank you for that.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minnick. At this time, I am going to call, actually, should we pause now to reset the tapes? We're going to take a small... We're going to take a small recess because this is a long meeting, we have to actually switch a, I don't know the terminology.
Memory card.
A memory card, it's not a tape anymore, you guys. Everything is digital now. We're going to take a four-minute recess. Our recess is over, we're going to continue our meeting, thank you, everybody. Okay, on to action item number 25-03-53. Consider approval of the 2425 midyear budget amendment. This is a first and final reading, I have a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve action item number 25-03-53, the 2024-2025 midyear budget amendment, first and final reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Vice President Sedu and seconded by Secretary Westra. Ms. Minnick did note that the number was incorrect in the presentation, but it appears to be correct in the actual resolution here or the action item. So I know we have discussion around this, at this point, we could call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. All right. Moving on to action item number 25-03-54. Consider approval of a resolution for bid pack number T-10 E-rate structured cabling, final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a budget package, a bid package, T-10 E-rate structured cabling, action item 250354, final reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Picard. We did discuss this at last week's, or last meeting. Do we have any additional comments or questions around this particular action item? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. On to action item, oh, I almost lost my place here, you guys. Action item number 25-03-55. Consider approval of a resolution for bid pack number E-11, new work electronics, it's supposed to say network electronics? Final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid pack E-11, network electronics, final reading, action item 250355.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Vice President Sedu. Again, we talked about this at last meeting, any other additional comments or questions around this? No? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. On to action item number 25-03-56. Consider approval of a resolution for bid pack number T-11 technology related to bid pack number EL-4 and number HS-7A. This is also a final reading, can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid pack T-11 technology related to bid pack EL-4 and bid pack HS-7A, action item 250356, final reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Picard. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Onto the next one. Action item number 25-03-57. Consider approval of a resolution for bid pack number PSEP-3, Canton High School paving, award recommendations, this is a final reading, can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid pack PSEP-3, Canton High School paving award recommendations, action item 250357, final reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Secretary Westra. Any comments or questions around this particular action item? Hearing none, I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, on to action item number 25-03-58. Consider approval of a resolution for bid pack number HS-7A, Salem High School remodeling, award recommendations, this is a final reading, can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid pack HS-7A, Salem High School remodeling award recommendations, action item 250358, final reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Picard. Do we have any comments or questions around this particular action item?
I do. I have some specific questions around the bathrooms, and we received some nice high-resolution images that helped us to understand where those things are done, and it looks like there's a number of bathrooms that are marked in the blue color, which indicates they're not being renovated, and some that have some portions of blue, and then the doors are marked as orange. So I wonder if you could just kind of go over all the different bathrooms, staff bathrooms, locker room bathrooms, all the bathrooms at the Salem High School.
Good evening, Board. I'm Matt Lentz, the Director of Facility, for those who don't know me. Last time we were here, we presented this, the questions came up about the bathrooms. It was requested that we do a walkthrough of the entire building, all the bathrooms, all the locker rooms, and everything. So I just wanted to let you know, I conducted two walkthroughs, one with TMP, our architect on record, and one with the principal. A second was conducted with McCarthy Smith, gentleman standing here behind me, another representative of TMB, the architect as well, just to kind of do a full and kind of comprehensive review to get all the players involved in the, kind of in the walk. Introduce Brian from McCarthy Smith. Kind of give us a little bit of an overview.
Sure, so in totality, and we spoke a little bit at the last board meeting, all but one group restroom is included as part of this bid package. During our walkthrough of probably nine restrooms that are not included as part of this renovation, eight of them were basically single-use staff restrooms. So we walked, myself and the district and TMP, and reviewed all those restrooms. Most of those are in good condition, being that they're single-use, they don't see quite the occupant load that the rest of them do. We did identify two separate bathrooms that we would recommend to be considered through the Bond Steering Committee, ultimately potentially through the Finance and Operations Committee. They would include fourth, as part of this upcoming bid package via contingency, one of which is a group restroom on the first floor, and the other is the nurse's office on the second floor. That was something that the Student Achievement Committee, Student Voice in Action, thank you, I had voiced the concern previously, and those are really the only two that were, I'll call more general population. Everything else, from a group restroom perspective, is included as part of this proposal. When we talk about locker rooms, there's really three types of locker rooms. One is the naddatorium, or the pool locker room, that was completed as part of the 2013 bond and is in good condition, and we don't recommend any significant upgrade or replacement therein. The other locker rooms have some adjacencies to what will be a forthcoming bid package as part of the Salem multipurpose room addition. It does not, our opinion, does not make sense at this point in time until that design is completed, to push forward with that work until we know the overall impact on those adjacencies, but we would suggest that those probably be included as part of this upcoming bid package for the Salem multipurpose room. Through our conversations for those other, I'll call it, eight single-use staff restrooms, our recommendation, because it's somewhat of a large scope of work, we could include those as part of an alternate moving forward, so we could get pricing on those, to have a little bit bigger understanding of the overall picture from a budget perspective on what kind of impact that would have, as well as have an availability for multiple bidders and competitive pricing at that point in time, in which we could bring it forward in front of the board for potential approval.
Okay, great. From that perspective, because this is a multi-year project that we're doing in Salem, can those alternates and those change orders that we're potentially considering, can they be still included in the timeframe that we're doing the Salem work?
It is. In totality, our plan for Salem really is going to span about two years. So that second year, we would basically be breaking ground with board approval on that multipurpose room addition, so that could kind of dovetail into that same scope of work.
And so we could, for example, include these eight single-use restrooms, the other ones that are being considered as part of the process as well?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we can just get that formally written up in board notes, I would appreciate that, so we've got some documentation to that, to make sure that we can follow through on this process.
Sure.
With that clarity and next step, so this would go through the Bond Steering Committee for renovation?
As I understand it, the process is all the stuff goes through Bond Steering first, and then they come through to FNO. We review it multiple times in FNO, they go through FNO, comes here to the full board, we all, so we can keep you updated, at least to the extent.
But how long will this process be?
Well, I think that what we heard is that we can include these things in the Salem project, so even those Salem...
Even going through the Bond Steering Committee?
Yeah, of course, yes. It is a two-year project at Salem, so Salem is a substantial renovation, and they can't do all the work in the summer or in off hours, so it will be two summers that will be included for the Salem project. So we can include this in the scope of the Salem work.
Thanks for bringing it up.
And for whatever reason, if this is not brought forward through the Bond Steering Committee, if we can inform the board as part of that process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, on to action item number 25-03-59. Consider approval of a resolution for bid pack number EL-5, barren furniture purchase. This is a final reading, can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package EL-5, barren furniture purchases. This is a final reading, action number 250359.
Can I have a second? Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Ahmed. Any comments, questions around this particular action item? No? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay. On to our Citizens' Comments overflow section, which is necessary this evening, because we've had several. I do want to remind our audience that any comments that are personal in nature to board members or staff, please omit them. And I also want to remind everybody you have three minutes to speak. And up next, we have, is it Shar Haverosa, Rosie?
Haverosi.
Haverosi, thank you.
Hi, this is actually from my neighbor. She does, this is all very positive. She does mention some teachers' names, she calls them out, is it okay if I include them? Or am I not allowed to say names?
If it's a positive recognition, I think it's fine.
Okay, all right. Dear PCCS School Board, I am writing to express my sincere appreciation for the exceptional education and support my child receives at Bird Elementary School. In a time when concerns about school systems often take center stage, I want to highlight the positive impact Bird Elementary has had on our family. My eldest child is currently in their final year at Bird Elementary, a school where we have been a part of since their kindergarten year. Recently, our family experienced significant personal changes, including a move. As a parent, it was my priority to find housing that would allow my children to continue their education at Bird Elementary, given our previous positive experiences there. This decision has proven to be invaluable as the school year has progressed. Since the beginning of the school year, my fifth grader has faced mental health challenges related to these recent life changes. The fifth grade team at Bird Elementary promptly recognized these struggles and proactively reached out to develop a plan, a support plan with me. Throughout the school year, these dedicated teachers and other staff members have maintained consistent communication with me, ensuring my child receives the necessary support each day. As a mother, I'm incredibly grateful for their commitment, which gives me confidence and peace of mind in sending my child to school every single day. Thanks to their efforts, my child feels secure and supported in attending school and managing their mental health, and their academic performance has not suffered. While my child is understandably anxious about the transition to middle school next year, I am confident that the exceptional team at Bird Elementary has provided them with the best possible preparation. Thank you for your time. I would like to specially acknowledge the following staff members by name for the outstanding contributions. Fifth grade team, Jen Clapper, Carley Way, Neil Dixon, Principal George Hill, Student Support Coordinator Katie Wagner, and Behavior Support Specialist Suzanne Lewis. Sincerely, a grateful parent. So this is from my neighbor who couldn't come, but thank you.
I'm having difficulty reading this name. Steve Goules? I'm sorry? Come on up. I appreciate you correcting us.
I filled it up quickly just as I arrived, and I'll learn not to arrive late next time to, so not to be about last. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my daughter for a situation regarding PSEP athletics, which is an unfortunate situation, but also is potential revenue opportunity, given the finance discussion tonight. She had an interest in trying out for a team as a freshman only at the JV level, and unfortunately, the sport that she's interested in has not been offered at the JV level for Salem for many, many years. And she, however, the other schools at the park do have offered this sport consistently, except for a slight dip around COVID. At this point, the sport, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy that students just don't show up to have, to support a JV program. We've approached boosters, not had any support. We've taken it to the AD, we've got referrals back to the team, and frankly, we know many students who were Salem students that transferred out and lost revenue opportunity, should have there been more, an opportunity. In addition, we're also aware of other sports that haven't been able to field teams on a one-off basis just because they haven't had a full team. So we've explored many things through this investigation over the last year. We understand that there's MHSA rules that govern, but there's ways to combine teams. We have heard that Starkweather has the ability to feed teams, or feed students to teams, to fill teams. We've also brought a homeschooled student to curt, and we're told that 60% enrollment in classes was needed to support that, but unfortunately, that caused, you know, if there were more opportunities to allow that, to allow other sports to thrive, for students who are already in the district, then could also provide a benefit to them. So what I would like to ask of the board are a few things. First of all, for a district this size, it seems that, for the major sports at least, that there should be opportunities for varsity and JV in both sexes. And where there's not, I would ask that there be an evaluation as to why that is not the case, has there been enough involvement from the AD, has the coaching staff done enough, are there feeder programs that are supporting? Secondly, is it Title IX concern, is if there has been enough effort, if the boys' programs are very strong, but the girls' programs are not, or vice versa, has there been equitable effort on that? Thirdly, I'd like to ask for some creativity endorsed by the board to maybe involve curt, hell heard, the PSEP ADs, to look at standing arrangements between the park schools within MHSA rules to create either unified teams or space available teams, and then also look at the homeschool schooling as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. That actually concludes our Citizens' Comments overflow section. We are moving on now to action items of discussion. We have a discussion point around the approval of Policy Number 5340, Student Welfare and Accidents. This was a first reading that was on our consent agenda that we pulled down for discussion. I will kick it over to Member Picard.
Okay, yeah, I just had concern about it because it's kind of vague, and I can't find the toilet type, I can't read this. And I didn't understand, are we taking the obligation, because in the original, this isn't it, it says, let me just take off my glasses. It shall be the duty of the superintendent to initiate and promote a safe education, or safety education and accident prevention program for the purpose of providing, you know, high school, that per section. I wasn't sure then if we're crossing that off, and then we put it down to, the Board of Education believes that the school personnel have certain responsibilities. I didn't, is that saying then it's up to us to provide, from what I understood, is it now putting that responsibility for the board to set up a standard or policy? And then it just says believes the school, it doesn't say expects, or, you know. But it also said, of school personnel, does that mean everybody? I mean, like... I mean, like kitchen, working in the kitchen, cafeteria, all that stuff. They have certain responsibilities in case of accidents which occur in school. So, and it does list said responsibilities extend to the administration of first aid by personally, personal, persons trained to do so. And then it lists more things. And then about notification of parents. And it wasn't clear, like, so is it the person who's administering the, helping with the accident? Is it their responsibility to notify the parents? Or is it, you know, then, is it an administrator's, you know, who notifies the parents? I guess it wasn't clear on that. And then later on, it does say, you know, talks about those that are first aid that have, that have the first aid training. But then later on, it says employees should administer first aid within limits of their knowledge of recommended practices. All employees should make the effort to increase their understanding of the proper steps to be taking in event of an accident. So, it's kind of leaving it, so, so are, we're just gonna be fine with what, you know? I mean, of course, we respond to an accident no matter, you know? But like, it's not clear, if I was an employee, I wouldn't be clear on exactly what is expected of me. And, and, and then things change, like processes, I know from going through CPR, that has changed, you know, how many times do you crush chest and all, you know, breathe and everything? So there's a lot of changes in that. And then, just whose responsibility is it to? I don't know if there was even a standard, like, I know just from where I work, you know, we have all this process of everything we do. And then, and then with the cards, you know, they don't have the, I guess they don't have the little cards anymore? You know, the little cards that you take them out with you and stuff? So, emergency cards, yeah. So, and I know we have a whole separate policy for that. But, and then that one, but, but then, so like, if it's all, you know, electronic, like in a computer, so how, you know, do they take that with them to like trips and things? Or, you know, I mean, the accessing that in a time enough frame to know how to, to handle that accident of, of a student? I just, and do we have professional, I mean, we could have professional development? Like, everybody takes, is this required to have CPR? Does everybody have to have their CPR courses and everything? Okay, so.
And I'm wondering if even, might be great if we look at administrative guidelines that might have some, like, how was this policy?
Yeah.
A couple of questions there. Emergency card, for example, there's a separate policy.
There's separate policy for that.
It's now electronic.
Electronic, that's what I was trying to say.
When they go on field trips, they have all of that information. Remember, if they have a fire drill, they have to have access to all of that information as well. A little bit of information or background on this policy. The law changed that required a cardiac response plan.
Right.
So that's that new language there.
I didn't hit that yet.
Yes, and so that's, and by the law, our staff had to be trained for, in CPR training. I think it's a secondary, Mr., if you don't have you, fill in the blanks. Secondary have to be for the sports?
Yes, it, it says, yes, secondary have to be.
Yes, under the new law and that, that verbiage will pop up in a couple of other policies also, is that for, for our secondary, for our secondary, we had to have a cardiac arrest plan in case anything happened. Before we brought this to, when we brought this to the policy committee, we talked to our nurses and whatnot to make sure that we had the plans and we are capable of implementing them. And each building has a, a plan. And so everybody, so everybody knows what their role is. Like, this person does this, this person is gonna contact parents. So each, each building has a plan based upon the uniqueness of the situation. So it might be different for the athletic event, who's gonna be there or what's out there. And so, as far as the language changes as it goes, when we did have this, the last time we did it, our, our legal counsel was there and one of the questions that came up on the policy was, does the, 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 that language is being stricken? Was it, was the spirit of it embedded in new language? And we kind of felt it was, which is why we made it, which is why it was decided to bring it for a first read.
Another question that you had in terms of, I think the prior language is principals shall inform families. And so this is the collective responsibility that if anything, any accident occurs in staff, the responsibility is, as you said, it could be a principal's out and there's the student support coordinator and that's the person that's responsible for making those contacts and filling out the accident reports, notifying parents, notifying administrative personnel, for example, if the principal's not there. So allowing that language to be more inclusive, to say if there is something that occurs in school, then we need to make sure that everybody is responsible for those proper notifications, calling a nine one one.
Okay, so is that what it's trying to say there? Like that everybody's responsible for?
So that's where, so as a board, as the overseeing body, you're saying all school personnel. So it's not just with principals out, so therefore we're gonna call tomorrow. It's still expected that if an accident occurs, you're holding everybody responsible for that.
Make sure that they, that it gets, happens. Okay, and then, oh, and, and about the, the, what is it, the A D equipment, you know, for the cardiac? So, I noticed we have a separate policy for the concussions, you know, for, that's something like that. So, would that require a separate, like, policy on that? I mean, should, instead of putting it right in there, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, it's a procedure?
Well, you mean, as far as you're talking about the cardiac response plan, should that be a separate?
We, we actually talked about that. Good question. We talked about that in policy because, I'm gonna speak up if I'm off. Because the original policy was exactly what you were talking about. And then legal counsel suggested that we add this other piece about the new state law with the cardiac arrest plan. And we debated, should we have two separate policies? And his, this is legal counsel telling us that, his recommendation is to put it all in one, to make it simpler, so you're not looking at two separate policies. And the administrative guidelines would be similar in terms of how Dr. Merritt and her team handle that. So it's just new language that's being added to clean up some of the old language.
Okay, so then, I guess, I guess it, what, so should we add the, the concussion stuff in there too? I mean, should, did we want the, how to handle it all? I mean, because it seems.
We had to add this somewhere.
Okay, yes, it would just be easier to add.
Yeah, so that was the other debate. We'd have to add this new state law. Where do we put it? Is it a policy? So I'm gonna, if you wanna, if I'm missing anything?
No, I think you can.
And it should, is, I mean, do we usually put the law on the policy?
Yes, it'll be added once, does Neola put that or do we?
With the actual law?
That's referencing that law, good question. Because we do have that referenced.
Um, I don't think, I think that if, if, if we go through the reads and we send it up there, I don't think they ref, I don't think they embed the law in it the same, would do that way. They may put the number at the bottom, they may put them, at the bottom, they'll put like Neola and M C L. It'll go down there. Oh, I thought you meant into the body of the, no. They usually references, yeah, they reference it down there. And I can make sure that it's there.
It references the laws.
Oh, okay, darn it, okay. So it will have that on there, remember? And then, and then it was just saying that school personnel have certain responsibilities. Said responsibilities are extent to the administration of first aid by persons trained to do so in that first of a paragraph. And then the second one says employees should administer first aid within the limits of their knowledge of recommended practices. So it just seems like that's like, so, you know, first aid by persons trained, but then limits of just your recommended practice. So it's kind of like, is it either redone it or not clear?
I think it's, it's actually kind of both. So if I'm completely trained, then I'm expected to be the first line of defense to go there. But if someone is not trained or somebody, another personnel person has to be in there, it's saying, basically do the best they can with, with their knowledge base. So generally, yes, most, most of our staff and increasingly are getting CPR trained at a rapid rate and that's, and that's something we're doing. But there, there could be, we could be a brand new hire that just came in or a brand new pair or administrative assistant that hasn't been trained yet. If something happened, then what they're saying is that to the best of your abilities, get first aid.
And they're protected, like, I'm sure.
Yes, good Samaritan law, that's what, good Samaritan law, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, alright, that, that helped. And, and, okay, so, so is the emergency cards anywhere printed up for something? Because I'm thinking, you know, what if the power goes out and you can't access? I mean, I think beyond, because.
All of the emergency cards are part of their building's emergency operation plan, so there's a hard copy as part of their do kit, yes.
Okay, okay, good to know, alright, thank you.
I have a general, like, kind of policy process question, just based on some of your questions were around administrative guidelines too. So when we update a policy, how, how, are we updating our administrative guidelines in tandem? Or is it, you know, kind of offset shortly thereafter?
I can say that we are also going through, going through all administrative guidelines from, from, from the first policy all the way through and making sure they're aligned to the new change. There's been so many changes and things over the years that some of them, right now I have a chart that they gave it for us to say, this is, this is when the policy was changed, this one administrative guideline should have, should have been changed at that point in time. And so we're going through and making sure that's, and, and we, we're gonna be starting that process to make sure all of them are updated based upon the, just the sheer amount of policies we've been pushing through the last year or whatnot.
Can I share, can I just add one piece? I would encourage anyone on the board, as you see this in your agenda packet, to email I'm gonna and I and say, hey, can you provide us more insight? We'd be happy to talk to you about the conversations we've had. And if you have feedback, we'd love to get that feedback to bring it back to policy. So, you know, we can have some of these conversations, because it's a committee, because we're not making any final decisions. But you're more than welcome to email I'm gonna and I and say, hey, can you clarify this? Can you talk more about this piece? And we'd be happy to talk to you.
I will say this policy, all the pol, I mean, this, we probably discussed this like two or three policy meetings that it cut on before we even got to this piece because, just to make sure. And then we made sure, we brought in, because of legalese, and then we made sure our attorneys were there to make sure that, hey, you know, Neola says, Neola brings them up and the policies are legal, all of them are meets legal requirement. But then we also want our legal counsel there to make sure that, yes, legal, but is it P C C S legal? So that's what we're trying to do.
Alright, thank you. Okay, thank you, good luck.
Any other questions that come?
I just wanna comment that the, I just looked up, the law section is M C L, section twenty-nine point nineteen B.
Oh, you got it there, okay. That wasn't on that.
No, but it will, but it, once like, yeah, once we, like, once it goes through, it'll be in the file.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, on to our next discussion item. So this is a Board of Education Operating Principles. At our, at our board workshop on March first, this was an item of discussion. We wanted to update our operating principles that we developed, I don't know, a couple of years ago, with, you know, members that are no longer members of the boards and wanted to update that for our entire team. We had gone through that list and revisited kind of each bullet point and made some revisions to some. We still have a couple outstanding areas that we wanted to discuss. Now, I know that we did request, if you had any wordsmithing to a bullet point or suggestions for, you know, how we can revise them, please send them to myself and Vice President Sedu. I had not received anything to, to date. So I, I know, I know our meeting's running longer, but I do want us to kind of revisit that so that we can button this up and sign it and have it at our seats. So, does anyone have any suggestions for edits tonight? Are we prepared for that? If not, might I suggest, again, that we try to send suggestions this week via email and that we can bring this to our next meeting to, to visit again and finalize. Does that seem okay?
Yeah.
The only suggestion I would have is to give us some wordings for the last one on no surprises, which I'll, I'll think about that and see if I can come up with something.
Yep, there was the no surri, surprises add, and then around the support for final board decisions. So that, language around that particular bullet point too. Okay, alright.
Okay, and, and, I'm not sure how to request this, but we'd like, you know, to put that policy on the agenda. I know we didn't ever got that put on the agenda for the next meeting. Is it possible or, what, what is the process?
Can you speak up, Sharla, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is the process that, we have to do that? Do we just need a second to get it on the agenda? A motion to put?
So, based on our conversation during our workshop too, you need to, to board members support to bring up any topic for, hey, I'd like to see this on the agenda. Usually that's brought up to the President, Vice President and Superintendent, to Dr. Merritt. And we go through an agenda planning meeting leading up to any board meeting and we start to align some of those suggestions. Sometimes though, it's not quite ready to go for a, a full board discussion and it may want to kick into committee. So your example of, of that policy recommendation and having some support there may actually want to go over to policy for some, some initial study and discussion before coming to the full board.
So what, what is their process with that?
Yes.
To connect with? Get that on the agenda?
Connect with, yeah, connect with.
Have everything go through, yeah.
Oh, okay, alright.
But I would say also just to add, so if you know this evening, for example, that you have two board members that wish to put that, then we can verbalize that here. We add that to the bottom, everybody has access to that master board calendar. And at the bottom, we still have those to be determined. Those would be, and we would talk about in our agenda planning.
Yep, okay. Yep, yep. So if you wanna clearly state that ask and if we have a, we have.
I will, yeah, we gotta find support. Gotta find the number, you know? What is it?
I'll see, twenty-four ten, yeah.
Twenty, yeah. Twenty-four ten. Okay, so yeah, I would like to request that, or make a motion that that would be on the next agenda or one of, the agenda for discussion.
Would be like revisit it.
Revisit it, yes, revisit it for discussion.
We would determine then from what the agenda, you know, with that process would be.
Yep.
Okay.
We have support. I see. Okay, so that we know that you, and, and truly, items like these don't always have to come to a formal board meeting. If there's support and discussion around some of these items, you're welcome to, you know, email or call or, you know, have a conversation about these too. That goes for any of us. Yeah.
Okay, okay, alright.
I'm gonna plug this into that calendar now, so we have.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, on to follow-up board questions. So from our last meeting, we had a few and I can't hold it up.
Can I bring one up? Because one of the ones, it was mine with regard to care professional positions. And, thank you, Dr. Merritt, for providing those numbers. I did have a clarifying question about the resignations and retirements. Were they from this school year or previous school, or last school year or the year before?
All this current school year.
This current school year.
All, all the numbers were from this current school year.
Okay, so that was.
Human resources that was satisfied in board notes and then that final follow-up question was just answered, so that should be satisfied.
Yep, and then we had a follow-up question about the Salem High School renovation around bathrooms, which was satisfied.
Well, I'd like it in writing.
Right.
It's, it's not satisfied yet.
So in terms of the questions from two twenty-five, you just wanted a detailed floor plan and a walkthrough.
So we got the floor plan, which is great, but I'd like it to be memorialized in writing what they're doing with the bathrooms and the ones that are included and the ones that are not included.
Right, so that is, I think, a new request from today's date, so I agree with you, but I think this part is satisfied.
Yeah, I guess the review is right, okay.
Yep.
And can we also have the, for, the, those amendments reviewed by the staff at Salem? In particular, I'm thinking about, there were some complaints about some of the teacher bathrooms and I'd like to make sure that we're.
They were included in that.
Okay, they were included, okay, alright.
All the bathroom, teacher bathrooms, these bathrooms.
I understand, but I wanna make sure that we're addressing those concerns with all of it. Because we're not renovating most of the teacher bathrooms, right?
They're actually have the potential to be included with this new addition that they have, the eight single use bathrooms that are there.
Okay.
So they, I don't wanna speak to any of them, we'll let them go through the process, but they.
Okay.
Have the potential to be included.
Okay, fair enough.
Yes, it's, we're on the same.
Yep, yep, I appreciate you lifting that. Okay, and then the last one from our last meeting was from the A P Chemistry Resolution, data privacy information regarding the A I tool, and that was provided in board notes. Tonight, Member Kehoe mentioned memorializing the addition, potentially addition of renovating those bathrooms. Were there any other follow-up board questions from this evening's meeting?
I just had a suggestion. If on the first comments section, we could put a thirty-minute counter as well so that people that have comments can, you know, have some idea whether they're gonna be able to speak during that first session or the second session.
Yeah, it would be helpful to have a time key. Yeah, it, it would be helpful to have a timekeeper or a way to, to show that thirty-minute time, because I certainly was not keeping time.
Yeah, I think you can announce what the time is that you started this. We've got clocks on both sides of the room.
Yep, yep. Yep, I think that's a great suggestion, okay?
Something, yeah.
Alright, that being said, everyone, we have, we're, I'm gonna adjourn the, adjourn the meeting at ten seventeen PM. Thank you all for hanging in there with me and us. Have a good evening.